Call like a order, our special meeting for the month of May. Please rise and will the firefighters are joining us tonight, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us for a special meeting. We added a few agenda items to it as well and trust agreement, it's just maybe getting at least the ones that are quickly dispensed with out of the way. So we'll do that. We're going to look at A, B, and E right off the bat to kind of get those out of the way. I don't foresee any public comment related to those, but I will offer if anybody has anything to say about motions, A, B, or E, it's a street closure, our Nimer insurance and our appointment of a part-time police officer. Seeing no hands and seeing nothing on Zoom. Kind of get a motion permitting the Boston Spa Central School District, Mulholland Avenue School to close grocery from 9:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. on Tuesday, May 17th, for EMS show and televent.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Raymond? Trustee Cormos, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries. I get a motion that the mayor be authorized to approve and sign the proposal for Marshall and Sterling for general liability insurance beginning fiscal year June 1st, 2022, in the amount of $104,419 and 1 cent. I trust the Vandensa? Any second?
I'll second.
Second trustee Raymond, any discussion?
Is this, is this an urban thing that we're doing like?
I think it's somewhat time sensitive, Ben, and we also want to line up some discussion with Marshall and Sterling with DPW to talk about, especially for vandalism issues moving forward. Kind of handle them so we want to make sure that they are in position to have that discussion before the new year starts off. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. They get a motion that James Redden be appointed as a part-time police officer.
I'll make that motion.
By trustee Cormos?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Vandensa? Any discussion?
That's a replacement.
It is indeed a replacement. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Let's go to the sidewalk law discussion now and then we'll see the fun stuff for later with the budget reallocation. We were given a draft sidewalk law for sidewalk dining and for sales. I'll let Carla run down the process by which we arrived at that real fast.
Sure. If you recall at the last couple of meetings, there was a discussion about having a sidewalk cafes and outdoor dining and outdoor merchandise, which had been permitted under executive orders during COVID, but were not permitted anymore. And folks wanted to come out and do it and you can only do that if you have a law. So I think it was the Revenue Advisory Board or Committee. Had done this last year or two years ago and provided Liz had provided me and Frank had provided me as well, this the draft law that they had done. I took that and tailored it somewhat, changed some of the tank, just cleaned it up a little bit. There was a lot of meat on there to work already. So what the law is, is it proposes outdoor dining, sidewalk cafes and sidewalk sales in the commercial business district and in the commercial district by temporary use permit from April 1st through October 31st. And it's each year they have to come in and get a new permit. The village building inspector will have the application, they go through all of this. And what the law does, it sets out who can do it and you know, where it can be specifically because it's on the public right of way. And you want to make sure that A, the village is not going to be sued if somebody gets hurt on the public right of way because they happen to be drinking at somebody's establishment. Or I know people have to be able to get by. We, it was originally through December 1st, but you just kind of heard us go back and forth, we, or December 31st. The board thought that perhaps October 31st makes more sense because there is a part in here that says you can't be on the sidewalks there and you can't have your dining, you can't have your sales if there's snow on the ground. So October 31st, I mean, it could snow October 15th or it could never snow until, you know, January. But October 31st is a six-month time period for them to have these permits. So what the board has in front of them, it's a new chapter 175 of the code. It says forth this, in order to enact it, you want me to put that to?
Well, I was just going to say that we will have opportunity for public hearing next week. One of the things we'll be approving is to set the public hearing tonight. We did make a couple subtle changes that we discussed with respect to it. Go ahead, Bernard.
The only thing I want to bring up is the 500 penalty.
Yep.
Is that coming specifically from anywhere? I don't know, I just feel like that's a little steep for our small businesses. That's our limit, isn't it?
In your, in the regular code, that's limited, it's not more than $500.
And who sets the penalties?
Code enforcement.
It would be, it would be code enforcement. What if, it's just like any other code enforcement issue, you would get a notice of violation and try and bring yourself into compliance. And then if you can't bring yourself into compliance, then you bring it to the court.
Alright, thank you.
So we'll also become a lead agency tonight by resolution I'll read for secret purposes. And we'll go to that in a second. Again, we will have public hearing about this, this public law in and of itself and will be up on the website for review as well. So any public comment is just in terms of general feelings about moving forward with this, I would ask. Not directing you what to say or do, but just to kind of give you the landscape here of what's tonight, what's next. We will not be voting on this tonight, most likely would be voting on it next Monday after discussion and public comment. If some major change is necessary, we will not be able to vote on it next Monday at that point in time. Anybody have any public comment related to the sidewalk law approach that we're taking? Seeing no hands here, anybody on Zoom? Give it a second for the raise hand function. I see no hand raising, so.
So there was some conversation about the 18 inches from the building.
I took that out.
So that sentence is done.
Yeah, that, that sentence was taken out and I changed the four to five.
Except when there's under a tree or something, or we're going to give them a little slack for other like fire hydrant.
I think we should put that in, that it can go down to, to four feet if there's an obstruction. Or is there a certain limit on the sign, how long you can do that?
There's usually, it's, it's fairly lengthy, it's like about 15 feet, I think you can go down four feet, so I mean.
Oh, we.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the DOT.
I don't, I don't think you need to put the length in because they don't figure it out. Shouldn't we put in the four feet piece or? Yeah, four feet if there's a fixed obstruction.
Right.
Yeah, so then the way we'll do it is there shall be, I'm at 175.7A. There shall be a minimum of five feet of clear distance, free of all obstructions to allow adequate pedestrian movement unless, which shut, sorry, which shall be four feet. And what did you, if there was an obstruction fix.
And I mean, that's a DOT, right? Why don't we just say following Department of.
That's it elsewhere.
No, but for this.
Well, I would put it in, but not, I wouldn't just say the OT reg and not specify.
But specify, but say according to the DOT, so.
Well, remember it's a standard, it's not.
It's not a regulation, it's just a standard.
Just a reminder, minutes are going to be derived from our reporting here, so please one at a time to avoid the overtalk. Thank you.
So just for the board and the public, it's now changed to there shall be a minimum of five feet of clear distance, free of all obstructions to allow adequate pedestrian movement, comma, which shall be four feet where there is a permanent obstruction. Is that what it is?
Or fixed, fixed obstruction.
Permanent or fixed obstruction.
You want to say such as a tree or fire, so that they understand what we're talking about?
I think they can talk to the.
Buildings, yeah, I'm concerned about that. And that's actually, if you read the next sentence, it actually defines obstruction such as tree wells, utility pole, streetlights, it's already in that.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to become lead agency and I'll read the resolution related to this and ask somebody to make the motion. And second, when I'm completing, or when I completed that, resolution number 22-1 proposed adoption of a 16th, 2022, resolution to declare lead agency in connection with local law number one of 2022. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa is reviewing local law one of 2022, which if adopted would add a new chapter 175, quote, sidewalk cafes, outdoor dining and sidewalk sales to the code of the Village of Boston Spa. And whereas the Board of Trustees has determined this to be an unlisted action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, also known as SEAKER. And whereas the Board of Trustees is authorized in the proper position to act as lead agency for this action, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby declares itself lead agency for SEAKER review purposes and be it further resolved that the village clerk and or attorney for the, and or attorney for the village is directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution and the proposed short environmental assessment form to any involved or interested agencies as may be determined. May I have a motion for passage of this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Vandensa? Second by trustee Cormos, any discussion? We need to do roll call vote, I will call the roll for this. Trustee Baskin? Trustee Baskin's aye, trustee Cormos? Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Vandensa? Mayor Rossi's an aye. That is approved unanimously. We also have a motion necessary to set a public hearing related to proposed local law number one of 2022 for the Village of Boston Spa, Village of Boston Spa, easy for me to say, to take place on Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at 7:01 p.m. and to direct the clerk to transmit the public hearing notice. May I have that motion?
I'll make that.
Trustee Raymond?
I'll say it.
Second by trustee Baskin, any discussion? Again, we'll go roll call for purposes of setting this, trustee Baskin? Trustee Cormos? Trustee Raymond? Trustee Vandensa? Mayor Rossi is aye. That is approved. Okay, so we're going to go back now to the budget reallocation discussion, which is the nature of the workshop that kind of led to the special board meeting. And we're going to let Treasurer Smith walk us through where we were, where we are, where we were going, et cetera. And then we'll jump in from there, so go ahead, Julia Smith.
Okay, first we'll just kind of go one by one from what items that Mayor Rossi had proposed removing from the budget and I'll elaborate on why that was and if anyone has additional comments, then we can go from there.
Are we going to vote after each item or we, you're going to?
We're going to, we're going to track it all, Ben, because it's workshop portion and then we can go to public comment. If we're going to go to a vote on anything and probably package the vote at that point in time to the degree we can do it.
The one thing else I also want to make a note of is that anything we remove or add into the budget, obviously at this point, it's not going to change the adopted budget unless we decide to do an amendment. But I would recommend this is all based off of budget amendments or transfers in which we can vote on at the end if there is anything to change. That being said, if we do individual votes for each item, we will have to have something to offset it. So if something needs to change from what was proposed from Mayor Rossi on, for the, for these proposed changes, then we need to have something to offset it.
I think people are interested in going line by line.
I mean, we'll go line by line to explain everything and if you have any comments.
Okay, you said either a amendment or?
It's, it's called the budget amendment. Our, the chart that I provide every meeting when I do that has a headline of budget transfer, but it's technically called a budget.
It's about the same thing, yeah. Okay, so we're, okay.
The first remove from the adopted budget that was proposed was for the crosswalk. There has been several conversations regarding this crosswalk, which I believe, I don't know the. Yes, this is the flashing crosswalk that was proposed right near Double Day Avenue, on Double Day Woods. And this was put into the budget during our budget workshops, back with our prior administration, prior mayor. This $15,000 was removed for the reason that based off of conversations with DOT, they will need prior approval and it could be a lengthy process, but that approval from DOT can only, can basically lead to the first, first step, which is painting the crosswalk. Painting the crosswalk wouldn't be as costly as this flashing crosswalk that we have in the budget currently at the $15,000. Painting the crosswalk would also lead to the, the ramps from sidewalks on either side. That was the main reason for eliminating this $15,000 out of the crosswalk. To be said, if we do want to move forward with that crosswalk, DOT would require a study, a complete study and to make sure that this location would be eligible for that flashing crosswalk. Any comments?
I believe they're undertaking that study, right?
There is a study, Steve Locco, I believe his name is, explained to me in an email, I won't read my line here because it saves us a little time, that when I asked him the question, I said, one of two results occurs here, basically from what I understand. You approve it and DOT pays for it or you deny it and we have no recourse essentially because it's a state highway. So either they pay or nothing happens. The answer was for the second part, correct. If DOT says no to the crosswalk, there's no crosswalk to be installed. If DOT says yes to it, the one asterisk is that if we don't have ADA ramps coming from each side of the sidewalks, then we'll have to do that as a village and install those, obviously not a $15,000 situation there. He said that at that point, they install at their timeframe, at their discretion. Generally, it is not given RRFB, which is the Rapid Response Flashing Beacon, is that what that stands for?
Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon.
Okay, close enough. I had the right letters.
You're in the ballpark.
Nonetheless, that's not the first thing that you get in that situation, when you say you get signs and you get the painting and then if further review necessitates the RRFBs, they would install the RRFBs, but that's obviously another study down the line before you would ever get to that point.
Yeah, that's not entirely correct. So actually what happens is it can, the study can go forward and if it satisfied warrants for a crosswalk, obviously DOT would say, okay, it satisfied warrants, we'll put a crosswalk in and they would pay essentially for everything. The RFBs are a whole other warrant, which requires us an additional level if we're going to install those. Now, DOT can do one of two things, they can install it and pay for it, or they can say, well, we don't see the absolute need for it. However, if a municipality wants to install it on their dime, they would give basically tentative approval and you would, you would go through the process for applying for a highway work permit. And at that point, DOT reviews whatever the plans are for the sidewalk or whatever treatments, ADA ramps, RFBs. And it goes through an approval process that way. And the municipality can put in the crosswalk with the caveat that they would have to maintain it indefinitely.
So as somebody that had to drive through what DOT was doing today to remark crosswalks throughout the village, I got to say, I don't think this is an undertaking the village should be doing on its own, that we should actually defer to DOT to do it because it was not a small undertaking just to do a couple of crosswalk repaintings on Route 50. That's my opinion, obviously, but just having watched it happen today and I actually went to get coffee to watch it further over, I know that is where I got the coffee, just kind of trying to get through it and then park it and everything else on a state highway, it's just not easy. And just to take you through the relevant piece of the email from Steve. It's, however, it would be on our schedule, as you said, which may not be in our new village's desired timetable. Alternatively, in such a case, we can provide the typical signings slash striking details and the village can install the markings and signage itself, once it has the ramps constructed. The RFB issue is separate, if we conclude RFBs are warranted at an existing crosswalk, we will install them at our cost. That said, I should also note that our general approach is not to jump directly to RFBs from quote, nothing and with, when a new crosswalk is established, the preference is to start with an enhanced signage and evaluate how motorists and pedestrians react to the new crosswalk. Then in turn, RFBs would be considered if it is determined additional reinforcement of the awareness message is needed. And that's dreadful.
Sorry, goodness, the, the.
Locco.
Steve Locco.
Locco, thank you.
I think given Route 50, if they, you know, determine a need, they, they're going to determine a need for that device because it's Route 50.
The engineering bulletin warrant for RFBs is generally 20 pedestrians crossing in any particular hour of the day with elderly handicapped and school-aged children counting as two. So theoretically, if you had 10 kids cross there, you satisfy the warrant. So the chances are relatively high that DOT will probably end up approving and paying for it. But I don't, I don't see a reason, if they don't approve the RFBs, that we wouldn't set the money aside. Because even if they do put in a crosswalk, it may not end up in this construction year per se. When I say construction year, I mean by the fall, but it could be sometime in April or May that they do it, which is still falls within this budget.
Just to drill down here a little bit, I don't think anybody at this table is disagreeing with the idea of having a crosswalk and that there's, there's the upshot of this. I think the disagreement is whether or not the advice or information I got from DOT is accurate or not and even if it is slightly skewed in one direction or another, if it really is going to cost $15,000 to lay paint across Route 50 because they're providing the signs, in such case, we would provide the typical signing and striking details and the village can install the markings and signage itself, once it has the ramps constructed. I'm guessing they would give us the signs because.
Right, we'd have to construct the ramps.
Right, the ramps are either way.
Right, and the $15,000 was estimated for ramps and the two RFBs that would be required. I'd like to leave it in, I think this is an excellent project that will really enhance safety of seniors and kids in that very busy street. I'm glad we're all supported, I wish we could all get behind it and try to do it as soon as possible and keeping this money in will enable us, hopefully, well, eliminate any delays, not having those fun. So I'd like to leave it in if I did.
I agree, I mean, it's somebody who's been asking for that some sort of crossing for years now.
Bernard?
So I guess what I'm a little concerned about, maybe I'm misunderstanding, it sounds like there will be a period where it's just strikes and signs. And I'm a little concerned with the timing of when those RFBs can finally go in that.
RFBs?
Yeah. Whatever the acronym, the lights, the, you know, the flashing lights to help people. I'm just a little concerned that it's a dangerous spot without, without. So I guess for me, what I would like to see there, if it's going to happen, that it happen kind of all within a very short timeframe, that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
I agree, I think, I think the put in strikes without those flashing deacons is very dangerous.
And my misunderstanding, it sounds like it's going to take some time for that to even happen.
I should also note that our general approach is not to jump directly to RFBs from nothing when a new crosswalk is established.
Can you forward that email to us? So we would advocate for what you're advocating for, Bernard, because I'd strongly agree with that, that we should have it all at the same time or it's going to be a problem.
I wouldn't want us to take action without that care. I guess, I don't know, I just, I'm concerned if we take action and we have this crosswalk that's not protected, I don't know what the technical term is from DOT, you know, from a labor person. I, I, I just, it makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, you too. It's in the budget now, so it's not like we have to take action. What we are going to do is pursue this diligently and try to make it happen as soon as possible and based on where we are at the time. So right now, we're hoping, you know, I sent information to DOT that they found very useful and I'm hoping that helps them convince them that they will do the whole thing.
Did they give you a timeline? I'm sorry.
They said a few months, John, do you have a sense of? Typically, those reports with a letter on findings are between 90 and 120 days.
The initiative study back, it sounds like in March, and they should be done by early June.
I think this will happen in this budget year and I'm hopeful, given the data that Ben collected, that, you know, it will happen.
But where are we spending $15,000 on is the question.
We're holding it in reserve, basically, and if this project, if DOT agrees to pay for it all, we free up that money and it could be used for something else.
John, DOT is going to pay for the RFB?
Not necessarily, if they satisfy the warrant, yes. If they don't satisfy the warrant.
We don't install them.
No, municipality has the option to install them with the caveat that they maintain the RFBs, which, that's not maintaining the sidewalk, that's just maintaining the, the subject linking signs.
I, I don't agree with that interpretation, it sounds like being a state road, they're, they're going to control the negativity some.
But if you apply for a highway work permit, like there's plenty of signals out there that we don't own. Because if it goes in front of a commercial, like for instance, you know, if a target goes in and they want a light, well, they have to satisfy the warrants, if they do, then they, they put the light in, they pay for it and through a highway work permit. And it's their maintenance, they have one or two options, they can either maintain it themselves or they can pay an annual fee to DOT for DOT to maintain it. So those are the, the options. With the RFBs, we don't, we generally say, okay, because it's a small, it's a much smaller thing, it doesn't require the same level of expertise. You, you can get an electrical contractor to maintain those. You know, if you have one on staff in the municipality, electrician. And that's all you'd be maintaining if they approve a sidewalk. You would be maintaining the RFBs. I mean, obviously you would, you could also put in a whole sidewalk and crosswalk with curb ramps through that same highway work permit, as long as DOT agrees to that, they would approve your permit, say, yes, you can go ahead and do that.
Bernard, you seem confused.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and so I'm, I'm just thinking about when we were just talking about Gold Card. And, you know, we have to justify, you know, if we put up staff signs and there wasn't, you know, merit obvious of, of the information we had. So if, I'm just trying to, this is not, again, not my wheelhouse, but if, if DOT is saying they don't see a purpose for it and with their information that they have, I guess I'm not understanding how we're able to do that.
It's not clearly defined if there is an purpose. There is clearly defined warrants. Now, somebody might still feel that a crosswalk would be a good thing there. DOT has to live and die by whatever warrants or standards they have. So we can't just arbitrarily decide, yeah, somebody thought that was a good idea. So it may not be warrants, it just means that we, the DOT can't install the crosswalk. Doesn't mean they won't allow somebody else to do it as long as they maintain it.
Yes, we'd have to.
The second part of your two for gets, gets the simpler answer. You're correct, if we don't approve placement of crosswalk markings or enhanced signage or a full RFB installation on our roadway, the village can't install them. That was said.
Yeah, it's oversimplified, then you would, they may allow you to apply for a highway work.
Can we move on to the next step?
Uh, no, I think we need to finish here.
I have a point of order, just, so are we going to vote on this or we're, we're not voting on anything until again?
I think, I think what we're basically trying to do is total up what we're moving to one side, totaling up what we're trying to spend on the other side and zero, and the plus and the minus is what it might weigh your budget, right?
The problem is, is we don't come, you know, I think.
Each of these, I haven't read forever.
Well, the, the last batch. Well, the last batch is, again, the formulate issues, and so don't get lost in those. There are a total of fourteen things, some of them interlinked, so.
Well, I guess on this one, are we going to come to a determination as we talk about each line item? So this line item, three of us are interested in keeping that money in. So is that going to?
So you're interested in keeping money in for something that DOT would tell you for?
So the question in terms of a point of order is, at what point do we put that on one side or?
I just, I just, I just want, we could probably pass through this one right now. I'm just asking the question. You are interested in keeping fifteen thousand dollars in a budget line right now for something that DOT has said they will pay for if they choose to install.
Yeah, we don't know if they, what they're going to do. I am a strong advocate of this project. I really think.
We are all, we are all advocating.
And the way to advocate for this and to make sure it happens is, and and when we put this budget together, everyone agreed, this would be a good use of village funds to to help ensure the safety of seniors. Now, it would be great if DOT did it. But Sean has made clear and he has repeated and he knows what he's talking about. If DOT doesn't do it, then we could go ahead and install it, and that's why the fifteen thousand is there. So I I really think it's a great use of village funds, and so I'd like to keep it in in the event we need.
Steve works strictly under the regional director, right?
Assistant to the regional director.
Yeah. Let's not underestimate.
We've been having a really good conversation up until now. Yes, but when, you guys are.
We're chewing on this one too long.
Well, I'm trying to understand it.
Well, it's one quarter of the sixty-two thousand dollars that's up for grabs here, I guess, so it's a important one out of the bag.
This isn't working.
We've we've all expressed our opinions. So when do we either resolve, finish this and move on, or how do we, how do we move on?
Well, if I can propose, how about we just leave it in the budget until we get a determination from DOT? If they say, yeah, we're going to do it, then you can just put it back into, you know, the general fund or and as a transfer. I mean, it sounds like we're going to know in a month, so.
But let me ask you one separate question just up here. I see you say the future. Are we really going to be the entity that is going to be stopping traffic to paint a crosswalk in that street in your mind, or is this something you'd rather see?
Other municipalities have done it, many other, Clifton Park, Malta.
How do you do it for the Hannaford when you put those stoplights in? Was that you guys doing it or DOT or?
DOT basically had, we had to take the entirety of that over. So DOT is not voluntary in the same way they did, we had paid for everything from soup to nuts in that situation. So was, hey, we, if we had that offer and the benefit to wait, we would have told Hannaford, hey, might might wait for a little while, a million and a half dollars.
But you coordinated the closure, that's the park closure, at least that street, while that was coming here, right?
It had to be from a complete work plan. It took hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right, so you did.
We were obligated to do it. They wouldn't do it themselves. We had to do it.
But so.
We don't, the village doesn't have to do that. You're sitting in a situation where the DOT is saying, hey, we'll pay for it.
Yeah, that would be great. We all agree with that.
Please move on to the next topic. Three of us want to keep it in the budget.
You just engage with me in question and answer. I answered your questions. Then don't push me to move on if you're asking me the questions. That was a good conversation. Yeah, I understand the question Ben's asking. It's one to differentiate those two things. Now we can move on. Without every time we have to hear the please move on thing. Let's go.
Okay, the next topic was for seventeen thousand dollars to be removed from the budget. The seventeen thousand dollars was for the comprehensive steering committee plan. The reason for doing this is the original plan for the comprehensive plan steering committee was to have two different phases of their consultants. One in this fiscal year that we're in and dating May thirty first, and the next, you know, for next fiscal year, beginning June first. There was a change that was reflected at the end of March, that second meeting in March, that decided to combine both of those parts of the comprehensive plan into one. Therefore, encumbering all the funds into this fiscal year. The funds that we were lacking in this fiscal year for that second part actually came out of contingency. There was a budget amendment on the March twenty eighth meeting. So that being said, the seventeen thousand dollars in next fiscal year doesn't actually have anything to allocate to. The seventeen thousand dollars is expended in this year, so seventeen thousand for next year is free.
So how much is expended for this year or allocated?
For this year, whatever the forty-three thousand plus the seventeen, you know.
I think this was, no argument, it's extra money, throw it back in the pot.
And then we have, what, thirty thousand next year for zoning?
Yep, that was a separate expense.
Anything else?
No, if it's appropriate, it was money.
Next one going down was ten thousand dollars to be removed from contingency. In the adopted budget, we had increased the contingency. Let me just double check. We had increased the contingency from a hundred thousand dollars to to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, just worked out. So this proposed change would remove ten thousand dollars from that increase, bring it to one hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is still ten percent higher than we had this current fiscal year. This was done more so to balance out some of the changes that we had proposed for adding back into the budget.
Question, how much of the contingency for this year is?
Putting back in the funds when we got reimbursed additional money from checks for paving. We have currently fifty-three thousand dollars in other contingency for this year.
Hey, what else?
I mean, one argument for increasing it was every, the price of everything is going up, up, up.
Yeah.
So you're comfortable.
And I think in the financial state in which the village is that currently with our fund balance and projected fund balance, I don't think we're at that financial instability what we were a few years ago, where we needed to have, you know, more contingency. The state does allow, I believe, ten percent of appropriations, which would be up to five hundred thousand dollars. But if this money is not used at the end of the year, it does go into fund balance. So anyway, that we don't use is just adding to the fund balance at the end of the year. So I do feel comfortable bringing it down to one hundred and ten thousand, which is still a ten percent increase.
Do you think there's going to be any need to take money out of contingency for utility?
For next, for this upcoming fiscal year, I don't. I was able to provide most utility increases the way that the history has been trying to do within within the tax gap. So I don't believe that there should be additional cost of contingency for utilities. Does that mean everything is?
Julia, you added like a hundred thousand dollars.
Yep, the biggest facilities that have the highest utility bills would be the water constations. And that was, I mean, we get a hundred thousand dollars in utilities every year.
And fingers crossed, we fixed all the emergency stuff last year. And we have kind of an an outlay on emergency equipment.
I'm okay with this.
Okay, uh, next up.
Trustee salary, it was proposed to bring it back to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one salaries, which is not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year. That to be said, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which is this proposed for, would be the first salary increase in, I think, two or so years. So this is just bringing it back down. That would be a four hundred and twenty-eight dollar removal of the budget.
In same with mayor.
In same with mayor, if you want to.
When was the increase? The last time there was an increase?
I want to say it was the last increase would have been twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one.
Sean, do you remember anything?
I, again.
Would have been two percent.
Two percent of nothing is hard to notice.
Spent that out of glass of soda, I think, didn't you?
You know, it'd cost these a little bit more than a hundred dollars a year, you know, on four thousand dollar salary, which is, you know.
You know, as I said before, I don't really care either way.
Yeah.
How would there's been about, yeah.
I mean.
What's, what's the symbol of that word?
That our villagers are suffering through a certain period right now, and so.
We have the largest fund balance we've ever had, so that doesn't.
No, no, I assume they're pocketbooks at home with the inflation they're facing and everything else. They're not getting raises to offset things in a lot of cases.
We're all losing it, of course. I don't know. I I think we get, you know, per hour, we're getting paid very, very little, like Sean said. And we do earn this money. It makes no difference to the budget, really. Yeah, it hasn't been increased in several years and the inflation rate is high, so you're actually taking a budget cut significantly. Again, it's not really the money. It's more, is the village making a statement that it actually values what trustees do? And it is valuable work, and it's okay to try to keep up with inflation, not that we're even doing it. I don't see a reason to change what was put in the budget.
I I really, I really argue. Guys, it's me. I hope we all do this for the love of the village and the community, and I presume you all are here for that reason. But honestly, I'm sorry, this stuff, and, you know, even if it can go toward something to help, you know, that we hadn't thought about until recently to, you know, find a little bit, who knows, community event. It's something better than nothing, so. I say just, you know, I need it for you, you know, consider the future, but I I really don't see any point of pulling on to it.
Like, like I said, I'll say it again, I don't really care because it's not really a significant amount of money either way. However, after, you know, last meeting, the mayor was complaining how little he's getting paid for the amount of hours.
Seventy-five cents an hour right now.
And we've had people in the public saying, well, we're paying you. And they said, well, you know, comments have been made that we should be working nights and weekends as well. Maybe the public in the next budget would be interested in doubling or tripling our salaries, you know, to be, you know, maybe six months of compensation for what we do. So, you know, I don't know.
I look at the difference between what towns pay their people and what villages pay, and.
We have so many volunteers for our community, we really do. They're not getting paid, and I I don't know.
I don't get paid ten months out of the year.
But I don't get paid at all in our certain community, such as our fairing. So I, I, I understand where you guys are coming from, but I I really just, it would be a nice gesture.
So final thoughts?
I'd like to just keep the budget the way it is. I I think we're, I think you're putting us in a position, I'd rather not talk about this either. I'd rather we just didn't have this political kind of posturing. And but it's, it was brought up not because it hasn't put it in there, but to force this conversation. That's why this was put in.
I'm not forcing this conversation, Ben, really. I, please understand, I get, I get what you guys are saying. I, you know, honestly, a lot of municipalities, you know, their their public servants, the trustees, or, you know, council people don't take an increase. I'm sorry, but really, genuinely, that's not my intent in this conversation. I just think it's a nice gesture.
I don't even see why this is here. Why, why bring this up for such a small amount of money? It is political, really. It is to, oh, we want to increase, you know, it's a political message. It it doesn't have any impact on over five million dollar budget.
Okay, so I'm assuming you are going to keep your salaries as they are?
No, I'll vote for it, but I think it's ridiculous that it's on the agenda.
Well, this could have been a pretty quick discussion if you had said that earlier, I think.
No, but I think the point is that it's a political motion.
So why are you voting for it if you don't agree with it?
Well, maybe I love it. It doesn't, personally, to me, I make a lot more money consulting than any, I mean, this is volunteer work. But, you know, we spend hours here and there is a salary. And employees make salaries, and they get a two percent or more raise each year. And but we who spend tremendous hours can't, you know, well, we're going to give it up.
I I guess from my perspective, I look at all of us, we are employed and, you know, I wasn't thinking, please. I hope, I don't know, I feel bad because you're upset about it, but really, I I just look at it, and I'm grateful that I have my full employment. It's it's a little thank you, you know, and I I don't know. It's not a big deal. Don't worry about it. It's not a big deal.
Too little to even.
I think you're, you're, you're putting more on it than is even necessary. But, you know, vote how you feel if you're going to vote, you know, and.
Consensus, maybe, I just, Liz, just say, move through. I can try to put you in this position.
You know, I don't even want to deal with this. I think it's not even worth our conversation time to deal with whether we each get a hundred dollar a year raise. Come on.
To be honest, if we vote by line item, I would abstain from this because I don't care either way.
Yeah, I will too.
Okay, so I guess to cover the scenario, instead of the two hundred and five dollars, I would be dropping, I'll drop the full six thirty-three on my mayor's salary, if you just move through it that way. Six thirty-three. Yeah. Okay, this, and that's my salary, so, I mean, is anybody object to me doing that?
No, that's political. It's the municipality. Go ahead and posture yourself.
Nobody asked me to do that. I just thought that to keep the number at least in the respectful level there to do it at this point. You can think what you want to, engineer.
So are we voting to remove six hundred and thirty-three dollars from the mayor's salary? Or is there, I mean, doesn't.
If you want to do that, that is fine.
That's enough to say, yes, I think, Berdak, you're good with that?
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, engineer, let me go back to refresh my memory. What's in the adopted budget? We have an increase in engineer fees of ten thousand dollars. We're actually going to cut that down, twenty thousand dollars from what's in the adopted budget of forty thousand, down to twenty thousand. So it would technically be a ten thousand dollar decrease from current fiscal year. The reason for doing this was due to some of the conditions surrounding where we put our engineering fees. Anything related to sewer goes into the sewer fund. Any project, you know, storm drains, any sewer infrastructure, any sewer grants, anything related to that would go to the sewer fund. Anything related to water, yes, it is in the general fund, but I do allocate it to the water department in the general fund. And that's just for recording abilities, for any projections, any history, any trends that I do. I know that the engineering fees associated with water are in one particular department. That being said, anything in the engineering line, which is what we remove twenty thousand dollars from, is specific to anything outside of those two realms. So current year, we have the seven hundred dollars that was expended. This relates to any filings. There was a more than twelve issue, so some of the engineering fees are minimum. Previous year, we did have additional expenses related to renovating Village Hall, and that's where we actually got about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of engineering fees. So to remove twenty thousand dollars, unless there's some big project that I'm unaware of that's not involving water and sewers, kind of justified to remove it out of that engineering fee.
Well, it's not exactly true that we can't use those funds for water, because water, yeah, we could use those engineering funds.
But we would be moving it to the water department if we're going to use it that way. And we do have funds available under the water department's budget for engineering fees.
On top of our funds that are available, right?
Yeah, there's only our funds. Twenty-five thousand dollars in the water fund for engineering fees.
What was it worth?
I, I don't have those numbers in front of me. I can see if I can grab them, but no guarantees.
My mind, twenty-five thousand dollars can exhaust it pretty rapidly, particularly if we're going to move forward with any sort of water tower studies or assessments.
What's our RPO share right now? What's our share right now, for Beadman?
Um, we have something seven thousand, maybe for this year, and then we'll get another two hundred and fifty seven thousand.
And we also have parallel sewer studies, which we can use that for.
So we're three hundred thousand, I'm saying.
Yeah, we don't have money in sewer fund, so that, that would not need a good chunk of that opera. I don't feel really comfortable going ten thousand less than out of this year. Also, because there are building issues, which would have to come out of this, we still haven't resolved the village hall, you know, and that needs to be remit. In order to deal with those problems, and BPW, we've got to deal with BPW this year. And that's going to take some engineering, as far as, uh, if we look at existing building, you know.
Same with building court, if if we find a place for them, that might.
But definitely BPW.
Also, there's some limits, the facial repair, that should be reviewed by the engineer to see what's critical about that, and what, you know, what should be fixed, what needs to be fixed.
Also, the map, which we'll discuss, but those all need engineering expertise to determine what needs to be done. So I could maybe look at reducing it by ten, but not by one.
Yeah, I think if we kept the thirty thousand dollar budget, that would probably, you know, be good, um, we probably don't need forty. Like, at least, I hope we don't, anything could happen, but, um, if we're going to reduce whatever, the current forty down to thirty, I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We want to reduce it by ten?
Yeah.
Totally, it's forty, thirty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars. You say that again, sorry, thirty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars. Now, in this situation, because we have twenty five thousand dollars less than we thought, I guess, exactly the penny, uh, yeah. Because we had sixty two proposed, thirty seven actual change matches, uh, I guess, instead of going line by line in these, perhaps pick out. Your favorite, uh, or least favorite type of scenario here, because obviously we have to add up to thirty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars in the worst, uh, it is, so.
I would prefer to go through the changes due to formulas first, because those are invitable in this situation.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Um, okay, so the first one we have is the Boston Bus and the School District contract, um, this is actually in our favor, um, this is actually going to be adding. Six thousand nine hundred and twenty two dollars to what we had budgeted, um, in the adopted budget, um, this is simply due to formula error. I I did have, they correct them out in there, but just didn't carry over to what was calculated in the test out.
We won't argue with the extra one.
So this is very nice.
Uh, that is what is in addition to what was in the adopted budget. Okay, um, this number that we have is for the loss of T-Mobile contract, what I initially thought was a seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollar loss, um, after reviewing some of the, um. Uh, cancellations of the contracts, um, what I originally thought was the loss of, um, the spring contract, which was the cheaper, it's actually the loss of the T-Mobile contract, they're not consolidating going forward. So it's actually going to be a twenty five thousand dollar loss, not a seventeen thousand dollar loss.
But, but, I can probably help you on that one, because, uh, we've been negotiating with Dish Network, and I'm still trying to iron out the final details, but the numbers. Have come up to what I think is a sustainable position across, not even as you see some of this too, from back and forth, uh, they met. The halfway on the request for a bump in the dollars to get us up to fifteen hundred dollars a month, which is eighteen thousand dollars a year. And I'm afraid we're not going to get all twelve months in this budget year, we'll probably get half of that, knowing what these things were, and three percent escalators, uh, per year, three percent, uh, jumps per year. Uh, so he wanted to go two, 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 and we held back for a little bit, and they finally went to three for us, so we appreciated that. The only question is, uh, how we handle if the repainting needs to occur on the exterior, where we're putting them on the John Street Tower. Uh, and I have to finish that conversation with Don Rhodes and with the business people at Dish, but it sounds like we'll probably get, give or take about nine thousand dollars. From that contract if we approve it, uh, this year, and so that original seventeen thousand might actually be net, net, still the number, even though we lost a twenty five thousand dollar contract. I would say yes, under the circumstances. Well, we can just call it nine thousand dollars for other, uh, negotiated contracts, or some of those.
Nine thousand now.
Nine thousand to your favor to balance out the twenty five thousand down.
Twenty five minus nine, so we'll have about sixteen thousand dollars that we are losing, um, due to this contract.
And I'll keep you updated, they'll show me next couple of weeks, as I figure that one out.
So going to the next line, um, when I realized that we should take into account for this loss of the T-Mobile contract, I did reevaluate the numbers that I had for revenue. Be incoming from, for our other, um, self power agreements, um, and I was able to account for an additional eight thousand, six hundred and forty six dollars. So between the T-Mobile, the Dish, and then the increase of the other contracts, we're only about three hundred and fifty four dollar difference. That we're losing, um, in total, out of all the self agreements. Almost, yeah, okay.
And that's kind of what we remember that formulaic, you know, the errors, they, she got them to wash to near zero or at zero at this, in this situation, so that. Basically, we don't have to worry about them, except to, if we were doing it during the actual budget, we would have had to approve as part of the budget, now it's just a question of budget transfers related to engineers. You said three fifty three?
Yeah, I think that's what they, they did in my head. Three fifty four.
Well, right?
Yes. Um, okay, so the egg hunt, um, due to the contract that we received this year from Towne Milton, um, it actually increased from two hundred dollars a year up to two hundred and fifty, and you know that signed contract. That to be said, our revenues for Easter egg hunt match our expenses for the Easter egg hunt, so we did, um, show the expenses at two fifty, but we didn't show the revenue at two fifty. So we're actually increasing the revenue, and therefore fifty dollars in our favor. And just to know, that's a completely lost goal, and we're just making it right in this. Um, judgment and claims, um, these next additional numbers that we have under our changes due to formulas were to balance out, um, the additives to the budget, so we can kind of skip over those. And go to the additives to the budget, um, unless there's any, so we have, uh, four hundred to be removed from judgment and claims. Um, this was to balance out the removes from the ads, so this was just a pure balance gain here. Um, the seven hundred and forty seven dollars is, um, again, just a difference between playing with the numbers to get the, um. Addition, to balance out, um, and same with those six hundred and thirteen dollars. It doesn't really matter in this situation.
We end up with a net gain, no?
Well, we had done the middle piece.
Yeah, no, but I mean, of the changes we're actually adding, because we did sixty nine, twenty two, minus three fifty five.
We're losing three fifty four.
No, you're losing three before I'm on a piece of that, thanks, Brian.
Yeah. Three eighty two, so we're adding six, six thousand nine hundred and twenty two dollars, we're removing twenty five thousand dollars, I just want to make sure that number's right with everyone. Um, we're adding that in nine thousand due to the Dish contract, we're adding in eighty six, forty six, due to the additional self power agreement funding, and we're adding in fifty dollars. So we have six, um.
So you send us all that stuff after the.
Yeah, once we get to some sort of conclusion with this, I can just reiterate in summary, so everyone has a number, right? Yep, so we had a loss of nine hundred and eighty two dollars from this section alone, yes. Yeah, so between.
An amount to worry about.
Well, since the budget's already adopted, we do have the balance, yeah.
It's a small, it it is not a significant amount, it could have been.
Thirty seven, two fifty one.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, thirty two, three fifty one, thirty seven, two five one.
Is what we can add back into the budget, to balance it.
Let's, uh, keep these in order of greatest value to least value, I think might be the way to do it, because we'll see what's left standing in this process, and, you know, just want to move on that discussion or not. That's.
Well, why don't we just go down and.
Okay, doesn't matter which way.
Take the big one first, because I think we have a lot of people being proud here from that one anyway, so might as well, if they want to. Yeah.
Okay, um, so to go, it's playing, we added, um, twenty thousand dollars, um, this was labeled as, you know, bathroom remodel slash miscellaneous. Um, one for to reiterate on the bathroom side of it, um, in this budget year, you know, actually I budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for, um, a bathroom remodel to make it ADA compliant. Um, it was removed from this budget year due to unexpected lateral repairs, um, and that was a choice that, you know, they were on agreement to do. Um, that to be said, um, with this addition of money, we're deciding to put it back in, due to the fact that this is a shelter. Um, so to have that ADA compliant bathroom would benefit, um, that facility and for that, um, measure, as well as it being a vote in place. Um, so we're giving them money that, um, they originally had intended to use this fiscal, uh, this fiscal year, but just.
With the two, five thousand, as you said, that fifty.
Yeah, they did have fifteen thousand dollars, um, honestly, with remodel, repairs, construction, whatever, we may have it, we don't know where that cost will be, and so we had to start looking into it. Um, but the miscellaneous side of that is, I've always had restrictions due to the high amount of repairs within the fire department. Um, so, given that, it might be five, uh, or ten thousand dollars to repair this bathroom, and maybe fifteen, and maybe twenty, but any additional money I would like to put back into the fire department for repairs.
Has the building inspector gone over and identified exactly what needs to be done to put it into compliance?
If you're okay, we could ask somebody to verify.
Sure, my name's Paul Maro, I'm captain of Eagle Math League. No, but I do have thirty five years in the plumbing industry, so I know the constraints in which handicap ADA requirements are. So, looking at it right now, to meet the constraints of the minimum turn radiuses and door sizes, there will be a significant, uh, investment to do that. I did have, uh, trustee Baskin come down and look, and he did say that, uh, it, you know, when people come to both, they don't use the bathroom. But we do staff that the entire time, some of those may need it, and, like, uh, Julie said, it is a alternate shelter. I'm on the, uh, Towne Milton Disaster Committee, and we have the Towne Milton Center as our main disaster area, and the ACC as, uh, the other one. Authorized by Red Cross as our main shelter, but that is an alternate shelter, so it is, sort of public access building, it should be.
Completely understand the need, it's just, because we're paying, spending taxpayer money, we got to check all the boxes, so we.
Oh, they totally understand, I mean, we could spend money on a, uh, engineer to come in and do it, and it might end up being more than, uh, what you're saying, so. Being, so we were going to do the labor ourselves, we thought that would be a reasonable, and any money is not expended, would go back into the budget for, uh, other purposes.
I don't doubt your expertise, but just for our matters, we should probably have a building inspector go down there and verify what you're saying.
My number's available, he's welcome at any time.
I'd also like to see at that range, how many estimates are needed, I'd like to see somebody. Do a, do a, you know, detailed estimate and come, come to us with that.
With that contractor included?
Well, if you're going to do, if you're going to do.
We'll have to have another meeting to.
Right, no, I mean, if you're going to do the work yourself, that would be great.
Right.
Um, but how much is it going to cost, I mean, we have a twenty thousand dollar figure here, but we have no details, so, you know, present us the details.
Okay, well, then, we'll go through the motions, whoever contractor give a full price and let them do that.
Yeah, I don't doubt it's needed, I'm in favor of it, it's just as our shared responsibility.
I'm well aware.
We should allocate the money when we have the details.
Well, that's what you just did with the DOT crosswalk, but Carla has a point with respect to.
If they're going to do it themselves, um, it's not prevailing wage, obviously, if they're going to go out with a contractor, that's going to be prevailing wage adds twenty percent or more to.
I, I, like I said, I'm glad we do it, and we'll come back to you with a figure that's going to be substantially higher, I'm sure, but we can do this, uh, you know.
I'm also in support of this, you know, when I'm thinking about it, um, initially, like, what is going, what is going, but.
Right.
The voting, uh, poll workers stayed the whole day, and I didn't know it was a public shelter, so, for both those reasons, it's going to have an ADA compliant, I guess. Even if you don't, um, even if you didn't get the whole contractors, uh, thing, we went the other way, it'd still be good for us to know what you intend, so for example, there's two bathrooms, you're saying making one bathroom?
There's a possibility you don't need to wait to meet the wheelchair requirements and the grab bar.
They're both pretty big, don't you think the smaller bathroom could be the ADA bathroom and the other one?
No, because it doesn't have the turning radius, you need four foot turning radius for a wheelchair, and.
It's not weighted, man, so, the toilet is inside, but could it move, the toilet move over, and would the room be bigger, I'm just saying, it wouldn't be bad to know what, what you're impending, in terms of the design.
Right. So, we can come up with a, uh, we can put out a blueprint and show everything we're about, we can meet those constraints, but. When I come back to you in three months, is that money that's going to be there that I need to do it? No, so, this is why it's kind of.
No, it's not the money not going to be there, I mean, we have contingency funds, if this is a needed adjustment, then we, you know.
Yeah, if it's a critical need, we can obviously take it from contingency.
And, and we have a fund bill, so, it isn't something that I think really needs to be decided today.
Uh, one thing I do want to ask, just to be clear, firefighters can have disabilities, correct?
That is correct, we've had several in the past, uh, a person with an amputee, uh, leg, we've had some physically handicapped. That provide a different service, not as structural firefighters, but, you know, clerical or backup, our one firefighter with it, who, uh, only had one leg. Was a certified state interior firefighter, so, yes, there are, uh, we cannot, by the law. Not take their application and deny them for that reason, so, we have to be very, uh, careful on how we approach that.
Actually, by, by the law, if you do accept them, you automatically make yourself your building ADA compliant.
Correct, correct.
No, I think we're all in agreement that this needs to be done, we just want to see the plan and the goals.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I hate to see the money not be there when the whole thing is finished and.
I mean, in my perception, twenty thousand is high, especially if you're doing your own labor, so that's why.
Wouldn't that be nice to see it put money back, right?
So, are you suggesting, Ben, to give a portion at least of the twenty thousand and then use contingency if it somehow is over that?
No, I think just.
I can ask Ben that question.
Just table it until we see the number.
Why doesn't it have your C on that?
Why does it have your C on now?
What?
I, I think your suggestion is a good idea, Ben.
So you want to split the difference on the budget and put that in for now, with ten grand?
I think ten is reasonable for the project and they are happy that much.
If you need more, we'll get more.
All right, that's a big word here.
Yes.
I don't think there's any question that we're gonna pay for.
Yeah.
That's why I don't really see why we have to budget for this item right now.
Well, as Julia said, the notion here is to try to go for your devastating credits to zero, Chief Pro has his hand up, might as well.
So I will appreciate the, you know, your opinions on that, your, your help, willingness to help us, but don't forget, there's two firehouses in this village. And if we can spend ten thousand at Eagle Valley, we'll take the other ten thousand and accommodate you in the fire company. Okay, it's my job as fire chief, as department, for receive those two firehouses and do the best of my ability to be able to do everything I can for those buildings, I don't know, but. With that money, we will do the best we can, whether it's eight thousand, we'll take twelve thousand or eight thousand toward Union, and we'll put the four back in the bank. We will work with the twenty, don't forget there's two firehouses, then do the same thing as the one in the other. So take the ten thousand, bring them out of the US, but I'll take the other ten and look at it for the new fire company.
Wow.
Got twenty thousand dollars on the table, let's utilize it to benefit all firehouses.
Well, we're trying to reduce it.
Well, I'm not asking you to reduce it, I'm asking you to take the twenty thousand that's on the table, okay? You accommodated one fire department, do the next one, do the right thing.
Then we're open.
If it's sixteen thousand, we'll put four thousand back in. All right, that's it, and free labor here, okay? You talk about public safety for a crosswalk, our money needs to go to public safety, not buildings. All right, I've said enough of that, with my budget, opportunity came here to talk to you people months ago. I'm done taking our money out of town Milton taxpayers and town Boston taxpayers and putting it into your buildings. That's all, all right, Chief?
I'm, I'm just curious, why didn't you bring it up during the budget workshop originally?
He did. I did.
You didn't bring it up?
I did. Twenty-four minutes, we're rushing.
Well, we are.
I don't recall.
It's a big concern.
One, one at a time, everybody again, because.
It's a big concern, and I'm, I'm really having a hard time spending equipment, money on your buildings. Air packs are going up, air bottles are going up, PPE for gear going up, everything is going up, and right, we're struggling, so that's all we're at that.
Thank you, Chief.
We are putting sixty thousand dollars into you. So that it's not like we're not putting any money into the building.
I, I think the, the risk though, I think we learned tonight from the discussion is that if a disabled member of the community applies and qualifies. Automatically, there's a requirement to bring these firehouse bathrooms, both of them, or either depending on which one they choose. To be ADA compliant, and that's not a choice, that's a demand at that point by law. So are we dealing with a ticking time bomb situation for ourselves where we are probably foolish not to give the twenty thousand here? And suggest if we need contingency later to fulfill, if it's twenty-four or something like that, for two bathrooms. Ultimately, I didn't foresee that discussion tonight, but I get it from the back and forth, and I appreciate the candor of everybody on this, I think it's a good conversation to have, to learn.
I would be amenable to splitting up that budget if we can get both firehouses addressed, so.
So you're saying?
Ten, ten, ten.
So, okay, so twenty total to be split between the two firehouses with the possibility of contingency, if they run slightly over somehow on those, but they're gonna provide the labor in that situation.
Problem is, it only leaves us seventeen, two fifty-one for everything else.
I, I, I get that, but I think we just learned that we have a demanding situation by law, not just by desire on this one, and that's a problem, I think, for us. What about them?
Do they have handicapped accessible bathrooms?
DPW doesn't, I'm not sure about the library.
Library, I'm not sure it does.
Yeah, upstairs.
Village altar. Was that an ADA bathroom?
No.
No, so, I mean, we have a number of bathrooms that need addressing.
I, I agree with you, but these are emergency shelters.
Is union emergency shelter as well?
You're welcome.
I, I do, I do think it makes sense to have some kind of budget at the beginning of the project, so that. At some point, you don't say, oh, this actually costs thirty thousand each, you know, you said we could do this, now you need to, so somehow we need to keep paths on the private.
Yeah.
Uh, rule.
That's why I'm in favor of paying it until we see the numbers and then we allocate.
Well, it sounds like we have a lot of agreement among this board to move forward, but I, I really like Sean's idea to specifically save ten for each firehouse. And yeah, they, they sound like they're willing to come forward to show the plans and explain the plans to us and the costs, so I, I'd like to move forward with, with Sean's proposal.
And I just want to say, the thing I like about this situation is that they're putting their money where their mouth is in terms of the labor.
Absolutely, and I, I think we're getting very good values. You know, that being said, like I said, to uh.
Paul.
Paul. I'd like the building inspector to go down, give a recommendation at both firehouses. Sounds like you're providing labor, so we, all we really need is materials list for the rough estimate.
We will keep you updated as progress.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll, uh, we will work on that definitely, Carla and I will also oversee that, because these questions have risen with general buildings too.
And just, it's actually law that things are approved, allocated before they're spent, so we have ten thousand, but we do need a budget.
Okay.
Well, we need to approve it.
If we're approving the funds today for ten thousand each, we wouldn't need to approve the project unless it goes overboard and then that's when we, but it's not a capital project either, so.
But then we have to prove the specific expenditure to the.
If we're putting in the money right now for bathrooms at Nando, and what, I mean, whatever union decides to do with their ten thousand for their building. Um, they have up to that ten thousand dollars to spend because we did improve that budget number for the funds.
I thought the ten thousand was gonna be for handicap.
All pensions for the bathrooms.
Yes.
For both, oh, even ten thousand, but they would have the ability to sum that ten thousand dollars in the board, even if it cost them less.
Right.
They wanna have to approve the assets before.
That's why, that's why I wanted it presented, we've got an estimate, it cost this, we approve it.
I think in good faith, yes, we can, absolutely.
If you trust us, we're gonna actually adjust this with your mind.
Well, it's not our money.
Yeah, it's not our.
So the board.
And there is discussion that are the least.
So the board's in agreement to do ten thousand dollars for a Nando and ten thousand dollars for a union?
Only seventeen thousand, two fifty-one. So.
Mayor, I could just. Chief. Behalf of the fire department, thank you for that, and we, you know, it's not rude as we walk out right now. We've been running fire calls since that storm blew through, and we would like to probably try to get something before we go back to our homes, maybe a while later. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Welcome next to continue. Probably gonna see you back. Thanks for your work, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay.
So by now, let us tell the S DPA marketing, um, this is just an additional four thousand dollars on top of the five thousand dollars that we had.
Let's say.
The most expensive items for us.
Yeah, good point.
What do we have left, sorry?
We have seventeen thousand.
I'm, I'm gonna put a sidewalk budget to the side of him, because it was kind of like the leftover scenario, so let's go into the other items that were specific, I guess.
Okay. I'll just go from the top then, the ten thousand dollars for the thirty bath street facial repair. Um, I kind of precedent in this conversation, because the board did wonder why this wasn't brought up at budget workshops. Um.
Thirty-bath street is what building?
I'm sorry, the court and police. Um, and I do want to let anyone know that when we approach budget workshops, um, the budget heads or budget, or the department heads come forward with requests for third departments. Um, so the police will come forward with their request for the police department, and court will come forward with their request for the court department. Um, this expense that we're discussing is for the building as a whole, so unless. You know, they had come forward to the mayor at the time stating that there needs to be a diary pair for this ten thousand dollars, it's generally not gonna get brought up unless someone else. Um, sees the need for it, um, so that to be said, it wasn't.
I didn't read that.
It wasn't, it wasn't stuff at the budget workshops, um, due to the fact that, you know, the chief's focused on her, on his budget and the judge is focused on his budget.
Well, when I first took office, the person he pushed brought up was facial.
I do believe this has been discussed before.
Yeah, I'm not sure. He was concerned and, and. Was reassured that there was no danger, that it was secure, and that was like two years ago, so I. Like, you know, why is this appearing now, is, is something happened? Um, this, I would think, would come out of contingency if it's a needed repair that we didn't plan for.
Yeah, I, I, and we've had discussions in the past. I think this is something that we don't need to budget for, other than in contingency, and if there's a critical need, obviously, we'll take it out of contingency, but. Since it's been years, I can't really surmise that it's critical, so. I, and the simple fact that we are going to be looking for a new home for court and police at some point. I'd hate to invest money on a building that we may not occupy anymore, so. I would say if, if there's a critical need, we can pull it out of contingency for that building. That's my thoughts.
I have a question, wasn't, uh, I feel like Chief Bush had talked about the doors being.
Yeah, there was concern for the security of the doors surrounding the building, um, I do believe. The judge also stated that the doorway going into the core is not ADA compliant, um, they actually had to open the garage door to let in any individual with a wheelchair. Um, so there may not be a need specifically for the facial this year, but they did express concerns with other projects around the building.
Security and ADA issues, basically.
Do you know, did they say how much that was, that we didn't, I didn't get information on that, okay?
I think that kind of falls into where we need more specifics, um, if there's other things that aren't, you know, facial repair. Before we can make a decision on it.
I mean, they really need to get out of that building soon, it's probably had it in almost every way.
I mean, if they, after the fact, we get an estimate to bring them ADA compliance, I would consider that a critical need, move to pull it from contingency if we need it to.
And one thing, don't mumble if you can again, because.
Sorry, yeah. Sorry, Jerry.
Don't yell, I'm gonna say it again.
So you're recommending that if there's an illegal pull-up from contingency, instead of budgeting for it now?
Yeah. I'd like to add more details, you know, exactly what they want to fix and how much it's gonna cost.
The, the one thing I will remind the board though, is that in the future, I think we need to be more cognizant when their sheer facility is in existence. To understand that it's kind of one of these things going on in which nothing gets asked for, and then when you ask a sort of question, hey, is that building in great shape or what's going on? The general answer is no, there are things that need to be fixed, but didn't the other one ask you for, and the answer is no, they didn't, and then we end up in this type of situation.
That's kind of on them.
It's on all of us, I think, Liz, to be honest with you, because we know our village well enough to know certain answers right now.
Well, the, the judge did say wanted a wall, I mean, Christine, if I could ask that in the budget.
Yeah, they just installed it.
No, I know, I know, yeah, so there was something.
But that was for the court, specifically for their records, yeah.
Is that, has it been your impression that overall building things get neglected, or they're thinking about their department, would you agree to that?
My impression is that they asked for what they wanted, and they specifically said to me that knowing that they were going to be moving, they didn't want to spend. They didn't want to spend. Money on, on buildings. That's my recollection.
Thank you. It would be great if we could move them out of there.
That's another conversation for another day. From the, our own discussions internally, I think, you know, the answer is, we are working on that as quickly as we can with a little bit of assistance right now, and so let's, let's. Move from that discussion right now, we've got the walking words right now to give more backup or background on what's going on in this building for emergency necessities. And we'll revisit contingency purposes, is that where we landed?
Yeah, I have a question, do we have funds in the budget for those walls to fix?
The wall?
Yeah.
The wall?
We have the engineering done.
Originally, that was gonna get paid for by the, uh, Tedesco grant.
Yes, we did have a fund still available for that, the way it is structured.
Well, we'll see where that is.
No, because that, that's could be, you know, a sizable amount of money, and that is a need, it's like ADA bathrooms, it needs to be addressed. And there's no money for that, and the, and the retaining wall as well, so we not looking at everything that we may need.
Well, right now, you have a hundred thousand dollar grant that you specifically named for a specific item is correct. And therefore, now we're kind of in that position where if we do it ourselves, we're going to forfeit the grant scenario, so.
So have we determined if we're getting that grant or not?
They are working on it on our behalf, they are hopeful.
So we don't know that we're gonna get the money to make those repairs.
Well, like you said, sometimes we're gonna have to wait a little bit here to see what specifically comes out of it, and we're pushing on that side as much as we can.
But there is the uncertainty that we have the dollars to fix, to make those essential repairs.
My conversations with the engineers, Bella, is the priority of those two things that we need to do is filling the vaults. That's a priority one, and that's actually the lower capital cost, I don't, um, potentially be on the DPW, if they could ever find it. I'm sorry, mumble it again, if they could ever find it. Um, so, I guess. Obviously, the retaining wall could be as much as a hundred thousand dollars, so. I don't see where we're gonna pull that from, unless it's a critical thing, um, and then you have that further discussion.
The, the one thing we cannot do is redo this grant a fourth or fifth time, wherever it lands on at this point, because we won't, we certainly won't ever see it when we do that. So again, I will be pressing, I, you know, they're in session until, what is it, uh, so June second. Hopefully give a week to breathe, at the worst case scenario, hopefully about a month, we'll get a better idea of what the dormitory authority is doing with their application for that.
But one way or another, we've gotta do that one.
I hear you, I just, you can't, you can't make that spending happen right now, and then.
No, okay. I'm just, I'm just bringing up other critical needs that we didn't address in this list.
Hundred percent.
Okay, the next ten thousand dollar expense proposed to add is ten thou, I'm sorry, just to give you that, ten thousand dollars for family fun day, um.
I think it's for various events.
Yes, um, it was the best parent family fun day, but I do believe that it is also to help fund some of the other event, community events that, um, the village has money, you know. Uh, allocated for, but not necessarily to the extent of which the mayor hoped, um, but one of the ideas with, um, having additional funds for family fun day was to kind of make it, you know, a front street event. But most of the idea, ideas right now are still just preliminary, as, um, we need the funds to put in before with any additional funding.
How much do we have in the budget for these events right, right now?
Nothing for family fun day, no, but.
Maybe like twenty-five hundred.
Because.
Uh, let me just go over that. Since this is event plus other activities.
So currently, we have four thousand dollars for the Memorial Day parade, um, two thousand for the holiday parade, holiday, holiday decorations is a thousand. Um, Easter egg hunt, it will go up to the two fifty, um, for, um, that's basically paid for by Milton, so hopefully some of that fund would be to make that event. A little bit more, and our village involved a little bit more of an expense portion of that.
Milton's wondering what villages and kicking in their own money on that event, and also to maybe locate the village moving forward, so it's something to think about.
How much is that?
For the Easter at home, it will be up to the, the two hundred, or the two fifty.
But that's Milton's money, basically.
It's a wash.
But it happens in Milton, not in the village.
Right, we're talking on moving forward though.
Yeah, okay, um, forty-five hundred for Summer Under the Stars, that actually is an increase from three thousand last year, um, due to the, um, popularity, popularity of the event. Uh, twenty-five hundred for Fallen Leaves, uh, two thousand for Winter Fest, if you remember, that was your request then to bump that up a little bit more, then make it more of an event. Um, and we have another expense in under that line for flags for some of the community events to replace.
So we already have eighteen thousand, two hundred under that. Eighteen thousand two hundred for events and.
Events and flags.
And how much of that is provided by Milton?
Um we have four hundred dollars.
Okay, so we're already spending a good amount.
Sixteen grand.
Yeah.
So I would yeah, I would say the absolute what you said, Julia, which is you can you come up with instead of activity, the potential budget and then you figure out how much you you want to spend virtually.
Okay, I will just make note that in this um expense line, we do have holiday decorations. I honestly have been hesitant about that line for a long time because that includes rental of the lift to decorate the tree at Wizwell Park. Um we do have to buy new lights. It seems like every single year because our uh Christmas lights are constantly dying out. Um we only have two thousand, one thousand in there for holiday decorations. So generally when the other events haven't happened, um the lack of funds for our holiday decorations usually comes from the other events that don't look fair.
Like a lot of the items here. I mean, to see, you know, where these numbers are going, you know, why ten thousand for one one day? That seems.
No, no, that's not what it is.
Well, see, that's that's what it is. That's all we see.
We have somebody involved in planning uh right now wants to speak. Let's might as well.
Actually, there's two events here.
Two of you, sorry. Go ahead.
Um we've been pricing out things because we're doing the first thing our plan is if.
Gina Marosi is speaking right now.
We've been looking into things because we do, for example, our first thing we'd like to do is um then we fund every imagine doing it more like a block party event in the village with events for children, which there's costs to that. Uh bouncy houses and things like that. There's expenses to that. We were pricing all these things out. Um music during the day, that costs money. And believe it or not, our salary is zero. All volunteer. So Mark has been looking into things like that.
Mark Blacko.
Mark White Ten Thompson Street bouncy. We figured about ten bouncy houses of various size. Front Street is a long street. There's, you know, we can have a lot of kids. I mean, think about thousands of kids and some of them are only ten by ten bouncy houses. Some of them are bigger. They run between three fifty and four fifty each. We have games. So that's approximately, I average about four thousand for that. There was about fifteen hundred dollars for um games to play, you know, throw in whatever. And we have then another two thousand for prizes for kids. Excuse me. Um then we have uh I figure two thousand dollars for a band and sound system. That's a little high, of course, but you know, who knows where bands are nowadays. So it runs about and then signage banners, you know, uh for the events. So it runs about ten thousand dollars.
Now the hope is to get some offset for your sponsorships.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's correct. But we can't promise that until we have a buy-in from the village.
When the other events are costing twenty five hundred or even the most expensive.
They're not costing that. That's what you're allotting.
You can't do anything for twenty five hundred dollars.
Well, we've been putting these events on, you know, with their costs.
So you remember family fun day? Have you attended that one? What was up with the fairgrounds?
Hmm, I've heard about it.
Did any of us?
When my kids were little.
Yeah, that's when the like the ACC has a hot dog stand and.
I think uh who brought me and I had a brick yard uh would open up a thing of their own.
I mean, just uh I'm sorry to interrupt. Um so princip- with Christmas ornaments, we uh Christmas, yes, we used to spend a thousand dollars for uh uh two years ago, we we did uh half of the Christmas ornaments on the the pole stuff, the the Christmas trees, the uh squirrel things. So that went to pay for that. Also, in addition to that, we got money from Hanford to do that. We got money from uh uh stewards to do that. And we also raised money to do that as well as decorating the tree. So even though you put in a thousand dollars, we and all those were refurbished as well. And we had all volunteers doing that. We painted the scrolls one especially where we painted the trees where we painted. We strung with uh LED lights. So um but we spent a lot more than a thousand dollars. So between and so that's that. Now for twenty five hundred dollars to do a a falling leaves festival, you're not even talking about having a band in an event. Um just candy. How much did you spot my candy for?
Well.
For Easter.
We have the S B P A doing concerts every week. We have orions doing concerts on Sundays. Yes, um having a nice band and all that. It to me, I think the other items on this list are frankly, you know, more important.
Brendan, I I get heard if you get some feedback because you were on one AS event for Iowa Roost yesterday. I know Mark, he walked by Sammy. Uh and who was who was the reaction?
Oh my gosh, people love that.
This is all about marketing the village, bringing people into the village and giving them something exciting to look at, engaging with the population. Um that brings in tax dollars through sales tax that I mean, that that brings an interest in the village that uh refurbit, you know, that brings a a positive influence to the village. It makes people want to volunteer for the village because the belt village members feel like they're involved.
All the events. Um the the what kept getting remarked to us and Man and it's just. Um people are just really excited to have something look pretty downtown and you know, utilizing Wizwell Park. Um it was, you know, lively, people, there's children and families and. You know, yeah, that was kind of the general field of the community.
So it was the Iron Roost event?
Yeah, it was.
Did we fund it?
No, I'm just using.
No, it was a special tenth anniversary special. It's not something you rely on.
Right, but that's the theme we should be going to is having our businesses within um sponsor, you know, at least sponsor events, if not control or take over and administer the event.
Yeah, I don't think any municipality pays people to do events. It's all volunteers and they pay their supplies and.
We we get Gina uh for a last word. I am the crowd side of this for now. There will be public comments available later on for the overall before we vote on anything scenario.
First of all, the event that was held yesterday was a private business holding a private event. They got to commit to do it. That was a non-for-profit event. What we propose to do in the village is non-for-profit and is to benefit. You have to remember one thing, you are the county seat. You have many children that are low income here and have nothing else to do over the summer. This is the highlight of their summer. It was the highlight of their summer years ago. They don't get to go on vacations. They have the pool and they have the events in the village and that's it. And if you can't get behind that and and like I said, it's not just you putting the money in. We go out and we say, look, the village wants to put this on. They've done this much. Can we ask you to help us out so we can make it even better? We can't even afford to do the fireworks for ten thousand dollars, okay? That's how much was spent on family fun day before. There will be no fireworks this year. So you need to think about what you're doing for your community, what you're giving your children. And the children really, and you say it is, don't enjoy those concerts in the park as much as they enjoy the bouncy houses, the games. We're 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 proposing doing uh Americana craft fair that people have to pay to have a booth at to help with income for it. We've got a lot of ideas, but we're not doing one more thing until we get a buy-in from the village. Well, so now it's up to you guys.
No, come with a budget. Like everything else, come with a budget for this event.
And we just.
And and you just, you keep saying it's not just this event. All we've heard is a budget for this event.
That's not true. We just told you we're asking you for ten thousand dollars for events and we're gonna go out and ask businesses to help us out with it. But showing a buy-in from the village really helps us.
Well, I don't understand why it one has to come before the other. Why can't we get a buy-in from the sponsors first and then the village can match funds?
Because this is the village's event. They have to show responsibility for the events. It is not Curtis Lumber's event. They're not proposing it. This is the village's events. And if you're not interested in supporting it, why should they be interested in supporting it?
I'd say we would put five thousand and the rest we gotta come up with or curtail the event. I think ten thousand for a one-day event is is too high.
Well, I will remind you that pulling it from the fairgrounds, which was a five thousand dollar rental in and of itself, would have eaten that up. At least they pulled it from there for the time being, but the hope is, yes.
Yeah, we'd actually pay.
Yes.
Fairground after we provide them all that police and fire.
Ladies, welcome to the relationship with the fairgrounds and the village boss's spa. This has been an ongoing issue for years.
Well.
We have a good relationship, but it's it's a business.
Yeah, you listen, I tell you what, it's probably your five thousand and you go do it. We're out.
Yeah, we can.
Save your money.
I can support this.
So forward.
All right, I had a talk. Yeah. So let's not end the conversation. So I like the idea of events in the village and um I do think they they build community and um people appreciate them. Um and and I also appreciate your willingness to put in the time because it is a lot of work. I've done events and it's just a lot of work. So I appreciate that you want to do that. Uh I guess you know, to me, ten thousand sounds like a lot for a one-day thing, but also if if we have to stay within this, you know, cap that we have left, you know, just what, how does that relate to other parties? You know, there's just kind of competition for these funds. Is it possible if we put in five, you could get five from businesses? Is that possible?
No, I'm I'm sorry. We I've I've done, I've tried to raise money for the birdhouses, the vendors, the most I've ever the businesses do not give you anything. I'm sorry, guys. Stewards will give you five hundred. It's it's now two fifty. Um now, I'm gonna. Hannah for, no, Hannah will give us about a thousand once, but still they'll get. Wait, wait, guys, guys. Um places will give you money if the programs are for uh they won't give you for events. They'll give you for educational stuff, um things that uh are underprivileged kids as in education um or um uh things that, you know, uh what sort of thing? Things like um.
Hannah was very specific about.
Yeah, very specific. They don't give you money for parties. Um so even stewards would be, so that's why the birdhouses was great. It was about community building and all that. Kids engaging, learning how to build stuff. Uh but they're not going to give us money. They specifically say no events, no parties. They go to, they get two hundred dollars from one place, two hundred dollars, and they raise about a thousand dollars.
Mark, let me get time off for one second. I've learned that being the liaison and having prior involvement, what is the answer to that, I guess?
Um they, it it's a slog. It it's hard. They they have to go. The difference is that um you know, with usually business associations, there's a little bit more to buy in from banks. Um but I don't know, I I never did events. That wasn't what I did with association, but it is a slog. It is tough to get my own. Um but definitely I can see from the perspective of small businesses, they don't have a lot to get. So it it is true marks uh that it's hard for them to, you know, give sponsors some do.
They look at it as money to bring clients in. It's marketing money.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the conversation for a second with everybody if I may, okay? I want to do one thing because I'm looking at the list here and I think I can at least get us into position to have a better answer going here. I think I saw unanimous consent about Julia's salary increase of twenty five hundred dollars in emails or at least nearing unanimous. So I put that down already at twenty five hundred dollars. Is there any objection to that right now? Okay, that leaves fourteen seven fifty one. The remaining categories, including events, our events, E S B P A, seniors and sidewalk, which again was a leftover type of category uh that we thought would be a good idea to start incentivizing, getting this code changed a little bit. And there may be other reasons to start doing that that Carol and I have to raise, maybe not tonight, but uh we'll see what our timing is like tonight about this. This has been something we've been kind of tripping on over the last few days. Um we'll get to that. Let's talk about the other stuff. Seniors, uh we haven't updated or upgraded the Boston area seniors from ten thousand two hundred and five years. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we haven't in any of the history that I have in the accounting system, we haven't increased their.
Is there a specific item this thousand dollars is for? Because again, we didn't hear.
It it's an inflation issue for them is I talked to Linda.
Well, so I'm not really uh in favor of the thousand for the seniors at this point in time. We asked them repeatedly when the budget was being created, what their needs were. They responded and we met that we funded them following what their request was. And I think they're they're not expecting more and that this amount is adequate for this year. And next year, again, I was an open-ended question. Uh I was expecting that they might go up and that we would bring, just like the ACC, they added money to their request and we we gave them official money. These people, just like with the friends of the Keter Ross, with the bottling scene, all of them were asked, what are you, you know, do you, what you, this is what you got last year, what do you want this year? They came back with the same amount. Um because they're they're clear and they did, they could have asked for more, open-ended, and they didn't. So we gave them what they requested. They are not expecting increases this year. And I think there's no need to revisit this at this time.
I I did ask Linda personally at the first luncheon that occurred after I took office, which was like the fifth of April. Uh her thoughts are sixth. Uh and her opinion was that they could definitely use more help. I so I I it was asked and answered and it was during the budget cycle still.
Wouldn't every other if not for profit?
I listen, just telling you, don't shoot the messenger.
To them and said, would you use an extra thousand? You expect them to say no?
I mean, I I went to her, I talked to her directly during, I said, and this is the deadline for this budget year. This is when you have to reply to us. And she made that that deadline and she told us. And so it was done. Sort of the process is done.
Okay, so the opinion here is to leave the seniors as is, despite knowing that there was at least informally a request for additional funds. You're okay leaving at ten thousand two hundred right now.
Yeah, there's, yes, considering how we were running. And I realize you said leftover for sidewalk budget, but if we're going start compliance, we're woefully underfunded right now. Well.
Can I just elaborate on the compliance part of the sidewalks? Doesn't the current code? I mean, what we have in our current code is a reimbursement rate. I think it's two fifty or something like that.
Woefully.
Which, yes, we have been trending higher in the reimbursements for sidewalks, but the compliance portion does involve the property owner to um pay to pay to get their sidewalk um updated to comply with their their laws. And if they don't, then the village will um pursue action during whatever procedures we need to to do that. But we will get reimbursed by reletting if they don't pay us.
No, no, but if they pay, they are entitled to reimbursement.
Right, right.
I think we should double that somewhere in there. Um I I mean, it would require a vote and all that, but um you know, I think we I think there may be consensus on the board that we need to increase that to some degree. Uh we did increase the amount this year from last year. Again, really, last year, the the funds are almost never completely used, it seems, right, in the past couple of years?
Because there's no compliance.
Well, there's no. It's a lot of money for homeowners to put out uh regardless.
Well, but the force compliance, force compliance is a zero at the end of the day. It's a question of when the reletting gets put into the it then becomes an accounting question that that isn't a realistic question.
But we haven't been.
Voluntary compliance is where you're having the spending actually happening because that's where we're saying you go out and do it yourself. We're gonna give you the two fifty. And we have to do force compliance. We're saying, here's the bill and it's coming down your tax levy.
I I understand that, but.
I I know you do. They don't, they don't.
As soon as we start putting notices on doors, people are going to start applying for reimbursement and doing their sidewalks. So and if we're gonna double the reimbursement rate, uh fif- I think it's fifteen thousand we have right now?
In the, yes, um that.
That could be eaten up in about five frontages of sidewalk.
I I've got I've got a news flash then for the board about one thing that I think we need to think about. I don't think we can act in any way or about it. It probably knows where we're going with this right now. We have a grant application outstanding for a matching grant of which a quarter million dollars would come from us possibly be maximized. And this is a, for instance, this is any grant we get for a sidewalk when I say this now. Our code says the sidewalk's the responsibility of the property owner. So we are applying for grants that we technically have an incompatibility with our code for because we can't give a gift as a village. Yet we're trying to get. As a village, yet we're trying to get grants to essentially give a gift to the property owner. There's an incompatibility there. And so, we really have some issues we need to work through with respect to sidewalk law. You know, forget about what we were talking about last year. This is suffered completely. This is a, okay, we like the reimbursement, I have a principle. But then what do we do in a situation where grants are available and we can't really give them the grant money?
Right, I bet you we could find a lot of places where we need sidewalks within our own right of way.
Also, I mean, other municipalities accept grants to replace sidewalk.
Well, well, let me back up for a second. High Boulevard is the grant I was syndicating, the C S A grant, is it, uh, T P?
It's a T A C C, it is not just for high, for east.
Right, as an example, Alana had, Alana had told me at PhD that it, part of the money there is for completion of sidewalks on High Boulevard. Those are, those are property owners, correct, that would be affected?
Depending on placement of the sidewalk. Right?
It's in the right of way.
It's in the right of way, but it is still the property owner, uh, property owner's responsibility, is it not, for the way it is?
Yeah, there's a code that they have responsible for me.
But I don't know that the code requires installation of the.
Yeah, it doesn't require, it just requires repair.
It says it shall be kept and maintained in a safe and proper manner by the property owners.
So, there's no sidewalk, but there should be, that could be the grant.
Yeah, I, and I have not seen the grant. I mean, the mayor and I chatted about this, um, and what I'm trying to answer, or trying to ascertain. Is where in your sidewalk law, um, which does need help, actually, just in general, the sidewalk law.
Yeah.
Um, where it even discusses whether the village is able to install, the village, if they're going to go and fix it. Obviously, you folks talked about how it goes into reletting. Um, there's, the way this reads, construction and repair of sidewalks under here, it doesn't actually.
We're gonna go into that kind of far field.
It doesn't address.
We all want more or think we don't have. Well, let's, 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 let's know where we gotta head for a second here. I don't think there's time wasted if she's basically.
I have the answer.
We have an answer.
One seventy-four dash one, such sidewalks and all repairs to the same shall be made by the owners or occupants of the premises.
Joining.
Joining such walks, I mean, supervision, just street superintendent.
If the sidewalk doesn't exist.
Installation.
Yeah, this is construction and repair of sidewalk, that's the title of it. This is, I'm reading from you, the construction, so it's the construction of sidewalks. So, sidewalks shall be made by the owners or occupants of the premises.
So, all the places that don't have sidewalks, we can tell them to have to build a sidewalk. But we can't provide grant money to do it for them because it's a gift under our code and we can't give gifts under our code. That's what, that's what the point is. We have a problem.
What I'd like, what I'd like to do, because you are kind of going, we are fields and it's almost nine o'clock. Um, I'd like to look at the grants, talk to Lainey, Alana about it, um, and then report back to the rest of the board as to what concerns I had from a legal perspective on that. Um, I think that you came to this with respect to putting money into the sidewalk, so I'm gonna circle this back to Julia about sidewalks.
Um, yeah, I mean, in our current fiscal year, we have the five thousand dollars. We did bump it up to the fifteen thousand and in preparation of hopefully getting more reimbursement rates. And it was discussed in prior years to kind of market a little bit better because, you know, when someone does call for a sidewalk permit. And I mentioned this reimbursement rate that we do offer, they're like, oh, really? I didn't know. So, um, that to be said, um, we do have a fifteen thousand dollars in there and.
From what amount, you said?
From five thousand in our current year, um, and based off of trends, I mean, this is our highest year yet at, uh, let me just double check what we actually spent in the date. Five thousand seven dollars, yeah.
So, just so you know, so for my personal example, I'm about to spend like eight thousand dollars on a student's honor. And so, that's gonna be two thousand twenty-five hundred, I think.
Two dollars and two cents.
Right, two fifty, five hundred square feet, so, um, it's going to be, you know, several thousand or a couple thousand of that, uh, just for one property. So, that can happen, you know, again, once people are told you have to do it, um, then obviously. How much is your sidewalk? Well, it's five feet wide by one hundred feet long. Your hundred feet, uh, front? Yeah, a lot of double wide, yeah, it's a double.
Undoing mine since the neighboring house is required to put in sidewalk, which was something that I was not informed of. And neither was the other new house that was built five years before us. You know, presented the plans, no sidewalk on either side, didn't think it was necessary, my my mistake. Uh, but I am planning on putting him in along with our neighbor and, uh, you know, doing it at the same time to save money, but I'm sure it's gonna cost.
So.
So, I'm not gonna hold on to this issue.
So, I, yeah, I was just gonna say, out of respect, I think we always have to ask you guys to go spend your two fifty a square foot first before we would ever ask you to pump up the rate on a law.
No, I, I wouldn't hold, I wouldn't hold on.
And I get it, I'm just saying, no, that we're not gonna be able to bump up the rate now with the records of the way it is very easily under the circumstances, so just be aware by our additions.
Yeah, you got the three of us, if they were.
How's your sidewalk going?
That's all, it's great.
I mean, there are places in the village that have it on, but I don't.
Anyway, yeah.
So, I think this, I think this whole sidewalk issue should be a separate topic.
But it is, it's true, we need, we need more, back to the event thing. Well, hold on, the idea here was we have other things that we can go back to investing, but we didn't talk about E S B P A yet. And so, actually, I'm gonna have Burned it at probably be the best, uh, discuser on this one to talk about what is or isn't necessary out of five thousand six hundred changes, that with the total, the two categories is?
So, again, there's seems to be disagreement on whether the watering is, um, you know, required or needed. I'm gonna err on the side that what, uh, Stacy Fitzsimmons requested, she, you know, really went out of her way to be thoughtful about it and not, kind of, she. Um, and not ask for too much, it is, you know, was a thought that if there's not a lot of rain this year.
Unlike tonight.
I know, and it's hard to tell, it's hard to predict what, um, what is there, but, uh, weather wise, but she really did try to keep it down. Um, and keep the cost per hour down. And, uh, regard, so Liz, just real quick, uh, the gazebo plot is not E S B P A's. So, we gotta figure that out, because.
Well, that, that's actually, you know, my point on the watering and, you know, gazebo luck aside. But the places where they do plant the flowers, um, like under the sign.
Yeah.
And, you know, I do.
I have the list.
But, but in the other places, I will agree to this increase if they also leave.
So, first, I was trying to get there.
Everybody, everybody, this is her floor now.
I, uh, spoke with Dana today and I actually spoke with, uh, Stacy. They they do have a volunteer lined up. And I'm gonna throw myself in there as a volunteer and keep an eye on that, the list finally of what plots exactly are, uh, you know, the adopt the plot plots. Um, you know, certainly I like meeting, so I don't mind doing it and I, you know, I'll keep in touch with, um.
The repair?
With Stacy and, uh, Dina and Liz, if for some reason see that there's an area that we're neglecting, let me know and I'll be happy to address it.
Just the last year, did you let anybody know?
Because I'm sure, granted, you would like them to keep an eye on it, but certainly, I'm sure if you brought it up to them, they would have taken care of it. So, anyway, I, like I said, there's a volunteer lined up, Stacy and myself to volunteer with the.
As long as it gets done, last year, it was clearly with neglecting, and in previous years, we.
Got a plan.
Was taken care of.
Okay, so E S B P A additional, what is that? Yeah, it's just. Again, if we're weighing, because all, you know, the finite amount of money, that watering was, you know, so that sixteen hundred could be towards this event, for example. And so, that amount of water, I mean, I, when I.
This is the original request, though, we're bumping back to the.
Right, right, I know, I know, I got the original request, and when I went back with Ellen, she's like, I don't know if we need it every day, you know, because we don't know that we really need it every day. Except for if it's hanging baskets, then yes, but this is in the grand, so every day you really don't need it. And so, the question is, is the sixteen hundred best spent that way or towards the event or something or sidewalks, something, that's all. Not like, things won't happen if you, if you put that extra money in, I guess, um, you know, I I, what Liz was saying, if they also agree, we, we have someone actually accountable for doing that.
Well, that's gonna bump the cost if you want somebody like.
While the way, that's gonna bump it up way, way higher.
I was thinking, since watering is not daily, by any means, if you're just talking, you know, I'm I'm pretty experienced gardener. I put in annuals all the time. I only water if there's like no rain for a week. So, you know, we don't.
I thought I misunderstood, because it sounded like so long as they took care of reading some way, that that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's for me, because it looked really shabby last year.
To maybe save us some party and whatnot here and see if we can reach a hopeful conclusion with even people in the room right now. Putting, putting the sixteen twenty-four in, just for the discussion point here, leaves thirteen one twenty-seven, okay? Here's my proposal. Events, seven thousand, E S B P A additional for digital marketing, which is something that we've heard from local businesses, it's something in need this year, especially of getting propped up. Three thousand in sidewalks, three thousand one twenty-seven, without the knowledge that we've gone from five thousand up to fifteen thousand already. And so, put us up to eighteen thousand, give us room to eventually make the increase after you to take care of what you have to, or we do what we need to do, so three number four at that point. That's my proposal to sort of get us through this, to spend that additional thirteen one twenty-seven. Liz, you have something to say?
I have one, one other requirement for the the marketing that.
If it's the bid, it's no way.
Their, then the idea, which was to match those funds and and to commit to to creating a B I D. As was stated in the economic development plan.
Uh, so to go back to that conversation, um, bringing up first off the the, um, the matrix for that economic development plan. If you look at page fifty-two where it talks about the bid, there's no mention of the E S B P A taking over any of the the prep or discussion whether to have a bid. And so far, discussions that have been happening, it's not very supportive for a bid. If there, yeah, no, and and I I think that you will find for the steering committee, which is gonna be just, uh, discussing economic development stuff next month in June. Um, that's gonna be discussed. They have been doing footwork and there's not a lot of support for it, but basically what I'm hearing is not much at all, so.
How to get into that, and I'm, like, I'm sure they put it in there.
Um, I don't know, it's, 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 it is in here on the page fifty-two, but it it says a village, village, like, when we, we assign whose responsibility it is, is that. But one thing that the the economic development matrix does say is that our village is relying on the E S B P A who's, you know, for the marketing. So, and again, just going back, it has been a tough year for a few, few years COVID, I mean, my goodness, it feels like one long, long, long year. But, um, I I think that people are really eager overall to get out again and, you know, go with, go out and shop. And I I really hope for our businesses, it, the whole intent originally was just to try to make sure that we capture that additional foot traffic here. Bring them here, you know, and the E S B P A does, um, do their marketing. They've done the marketing for the village for a long time, so.
I have a question, sure, with this increased funds, the voting three thousand now, is, is that to keep? The marketing dollars where they are, or is that to add three thousand?
So, they already, with the budget that you guys approved, I, I agree too. Um, that was what was requested, but what we, Frank and I had thought, after he having conversation, for instance, with Diana's. You know, they, they really had a rough go of foot traffic. There, I'm really actually excited, the E S B P A, we we probably eventually could get the marketing team to talk with us. They they already started thinking about how they can revamp their marketing. I mean, they know more than I know, honestly. When I was involved, those were to make sure visuals are consistent.
Are they taking this money and and, you, you know, using it to fund the programs that they had planned, or is they gonna?
No, it'd be additional stuff for our village.
Especially for digital, especially for digital.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand your question.
That's what I wanted to know, are they gonna do more?
Oh, yeah, no, no, they're doing more, yeah, I'm sorry.
More or less in point is toward digital, because that's where the, uh, it's been identified, there's been shortcomings in the past. And where they can probably take the best advantage of COVID money and, uh, traffic, et cetera, or post-COVID, as you call it, best at this point in time. And that's been the concern, I mean, for multiple business owners I've talked to, not just the honest.
Certainly to to revamp stuff on behalf of our community.
So, just to sort of continue with the theme of how I'm thinking about requests is, uh. Again, you know, we, we asked them during the budget process, what do you want, what do you need? They told us and we fully funded them. And in that process, Ellen did send us, this is how we're gonna spend village money. And she listed the ads and things, so if we're, if they need another three thousand. Um, then I'd like to see what, how that, you know, some justification, like a rationale, like, okay, this is how we're gonna spend. This is why we're going back to you for another three thousand after you give us spot. And that's why I was like, well, the B I D actually adds value, we can match, you know, if the businesses provide X thousand, we provide X thousand, it's a nice partnership. But they really don't want to do it, but if if we're gonna get three thousand, I'd like to know how they're spending. So, so out of respect, we could ask them to provide a little bit of documentation on the ideas for your market for that purpose. If we feel that it is not a sufficient idea, we can wrap it back into sidewalks at that point in time, uh, type of situation.
Or an event.
Or an event or something, okay? But again, the the original proposal that I came up with here with the origin, with the remaining thirteen one twenty-seven after watering, with seven thousand for events, three thousand for digital. Three thirty-one twenty-seven for sidewalks, knowing that puts us thirteen thousand higher than this past year on sidewalks. Uh, let me ask our events scope, just briefly, would seven thousand at least get you somewhere?
Look at our numbers.
I'm not very hot, but I'm excited. And like I said, Liz, you take the seven thousand and do it, go ahead. We've done these events before.
Really not, you're talking about.
Why not scale back, you know, a few less bouncy houses?
We did scale back, there's no fireworks, we've made it for another ten.
Well, fireworks, as I remember when I moved into this town nine years ago, was a really contentious issue. Why is the village spending money on fireworks? And I love fireworks, but it's a question of where do you spend your money?
I thought I explained that to you a while, like, I guess you weren't listening to well. You have children that this is all they get. This is all they do. They don't go on vacation. I just went through this with you. We give our time to put out an event that gives these kids memories that they would otherwise not have. These are the children of your village.
You should save them.
And the other events, they, they attend these as well, right?
No, what?
Swimming under the stars and calling league festival.
So, okay, so.
We can't do a calling league stuff, one twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. Everything done in this village is done with volunteer.
No, it's not. The E S P P A pays an employee.
One employee.
One employee.
I was a board member, Burned it at, how many hours did you put in? A lot, but a lot, but that's, that's, this village runs on volunteers.
You know, it does, it's, someone mows, someone mows.
It does take some, I need to, one at a time, everybody, let's relax, something.
Like we said, put your seven thousand dollars in the events fund. Do it.
Liz, you know, we pay someone to mow the grass here, but yet you won't pay for someone to put on an event, you won't even pay for the event.
Well, we had, right now, we had nineteen thousand dollars in events and decorations and.
For the whole year.
Well, if we add ten thousand, we're almost at five percent of our total budget for events, a little less, but, um, so it's not as if no money's going to events. So, say you had twenty-five thousand, you had seven, you had twenty-five thousand for events for the year, which is a good chunk of change. With that money, maybe we can rationally plan, you know, maybe it's fewer events or bigger events, but we could sort of figure that out.
We can put the money in, please.
I support events.
Two thousand dollars for the for the um, two thousand dollars for the um, Christmas parade goes to B S B P A, it has not come to us. Okay, we don't run the.
But they must spend it on something.
They that, I don't know what they spend it on. Um, the Memorial Day Parade goes to the.
Why is that? Why do we spend four thousand more than one thousand dollars, you know?
Because of police protection. I can take it out. I'm guessing, I don't know, there's one that I'm guessing. I feel like the police presence was way that high security. Yeah, it was it was kind of.
Again, we had twenty five.
When you said five percent, that'd be two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Five, five million.
Five percent be two hundred fifty thousand?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yeah, you're right, it was that.
A compromise on the table.
I I will say.
And if this group doesn't want to do it, then another group can do it. They can put more money towards something else. I mean, I think taking a hard line saying, we'll only do it if we get ten thousand.
Well, here's here's here was the next part before I sort of got jumped off my points here. I think we are being fair with the idea that when we have to dip into a little bit of contingency, a thousand here or a thousand there, we're willing to do it. If somebody comes with a hard concrete plan and says, hey, we need a little bit of extra push here. So under the circumstances, what they're going through, if they need an extra thousand or two to put together something, because they went down to the donors and they said. Yeah, we can give you this much and it's not quite there, given the extra nudge at that point, at least. The community knows that there's something on the table from the village and something more possibly if they can come come back with that plan or that idea.
Right, but um, I'm amenable to that, but contingency fund is for critical needs. It would have to come out of something else.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's.
There's all these other other events and.
Well, exactly, I like to set limits for what we take out of contingency. I don't think a thousand dollars is worth it. It can, it very well can be, but to be said, there are other departments that come under budget. I mean, let's just say general liability, just to prove that motion for a hundred and four thousand, I have a hundred and ten thousand. And you know, budget for that, so we know that there is money proved up already that we can remove from a department that will not use it.
Well, if you can make it happen with budget transfers.
I can do that, I mean, that's what we're doing with this.
So you want.
What you're saying is there's potential additional budget.
Yeah. Yeah, we do it every.
So we've got basically six thousand dollars to play with in that situation, and if they can go with something that is in the seven to ten thousand dollar range. We have room to breathe to do that later, but at least we put something into an earmark to say, here's money to show the world that the village is backing this. Ultimately.
Well, with that much, then I would say put five thousand in and put more into sidewalks if we still have that transfer.
I'm sorry, the other thing you have to realize, we have three months until, is if we do it in the beginning of August. We can't raise. Five to ten thousand dollars and get contracts with the bouncy house people, the food truck people, the crafters. We can't do that, I mean, that's.
It's my understanding that there's six grand on the table from that one budget.
Do do what you want to do, it's fine.
If we put five grand in and you used all the six grand, that would be eleven, and you're only asking for ten. So.
The idea, the idea is earmarking to the degree that you can earmark correctly so that people know where they're at.
Ten thousand feels high to me for a one-day event um. What about the idea, all right, we say seven thousand, anything above that is needs to be matched by private donation. So you get you get two fifty from a place, we manage it up to ten thousand, something like that, so that it's not, I don't, I'm not comfortable with this. You know, we're saying seven thousand, but we really don't know, it's whatever, we have no idea, could be anything, so I think um. That's how I would put some limit on it, you have to work to get to additional and we will match, and you can use that as a selling point. When you go with this is that we will match whatever they they do up to, I guess, ten thousand dollars.
So we have to table this because we're not willing to.
Okay, folks, folks, I think Sean Burnett and I, at least on this side of the table here, are in agreement to go seven, three, three, one, twenty-seven. Uh sidewalks, we have announced the six thousand that she just brought up, the general liability, there's room to breathe here in this respect. And let's, I think, move this along to at least put something earmarked in to give some assurances if people want to move it forward. They don't have to, if it does, it gets clawed back anyway, or it gets moved in the same way, that's the way we're gonna have to go with it. And, well, here's what we're gonna do, I I think we need to do a quick recap and then we will open up a public uh comment period.
They were all.
Yeah, I I think. Well, okay, hold on, we have Dave Warmer's uh, so I guess maybe that's from the B S B P A point of view, so let's see what he has to say.
Dave, go ahead. Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um.
Please, your name and address.
Oh, Dave Warmer, eighteen Coronado Way, Boston Spa. Uh, I am a board member of the B S B P A, I'm on the chair, co-chair of the marketing committee, I'll take some ownership of this. Um, and so I wanted to bring a little bit of light as to the plan in regard to, you know, what we would. Use those additional funds for, and I know Frank, you specifically earmarked this for digital media. And based on our conversations with our downtown businesses, our businesses, met business members. You know, we realize that there is a ton of value that they get from. Social media presence from our Facebook page as well as our other social media platforms. As long as, along with their specific social media reach. Uh, as an organization, you know, as it's been said, we have one paid position. And then we have eleven total board members. And of those board members, you know, like myself, most of us are running businesses and have a lot of other things that we're responsible for, so it's very difficult for us to stay up. To manage all that social media, so, you know, our primary goal with those funds would be to utilize a third-party. Um, local service essentially um, to help us manage that social media for the village. And, you know, and I say for the village because we have our members, but this this funding being specifically coming from the village. Along with the other um funds that we had specifically requested, so going back to the funds that we specifically requested. You know, we have funds that we we get through our through our events, we take donations from our sponsors. Those go to put on our events, but they also go to run the organization. Uh, along with the dues that we collect from our members, we use that money to market our member businesses. But also for many, many years, boss, the B S B P has marketed the village of Boston Spa. And that goes really beyond the scope of what the B S B P A is for our members. But we believe it's extremely important to market the village as a place for people to come and visit and shop and eventually want to live. And that is very expensive, um, so the the digital piece is something that is. A component we want to add, but right now we're spending majority of our marketing funds in print media. And we're right now having to make the decisions to drop some print to go to digital, which is fine in some cases, but. Not not, the entire population doesn't live in digital medium, and so that's what we're trying to do is, we need to bolster what we're doing with print. And then add digital, and then, you know, ideally, if we can get enough funds, do some more stuff like we used to do, like putting billboards back on the Northway to capture that. Trackbound traffic and capitalize, you know, on some of the concerns that people may have when going to Saratoga these days. So that's what we're looking to do. Um, and then while I'm here, uh, just to give a little bit of of um idea. Give you guys an idea of what it takes to run an event, I would say that Family Fun Day would probably roughly be the size of our car show. And our expense budget for that is about ten thousand dollars, so I don't, that that to me doesn't seem. Uh, like an uh, oh, too much of an ask, considering the amount of support that it would take to run that event. So, um, and there is money to get from sponsors, but I I, you know, it is, it is tougher these days because. Many businesses are still trying to figure out what twenty twenty-two is gonna look like, so my two cents on that, that's all.
If the three thousand dollars that I've kind of tried to talk the board into for digital marketing, et cetera, uh, as you're calling it here. Uh, would that be helpful?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's gonna cost us for us to have a, to to engage in any or with any organization. There's gonna be a monthly fee and then to run additional ads on top of that costs more, and the more we want to be able to spread the reach, the more that costs. I mean, that that three thousand dollars is a start, uh, and we could do a lot with that, but um, it's definitely helpful. Um, it helps us go beyond where we are today.
And I think I speak for the board when I say the same rules apply here, if they come up with a concrete proposal that goes to four thousand, for instance. Come to us, tell us what's going on, and we have a little bit of breathing space probably to reassess and say, okay. How's your watering going? Can you uh drag that back in? Okay, you're using all your watering money, can we go to uh and drag out a thousand from some other line that's not being used at that time? So I think the general theme tonight is go forth with the knowledge you have some earmarked money now in a certain area. Let us know what your ultimate final proposal numbers look like now that you're going out to price things. Come back, let us know what's going on, please try to stay within your budget number, we would appreciate that a lot. But we understand that you may have some great ideas that we just didn't account for its money that we want to help you out with ultimately. Is that a good way of summarizing it, anyone?
I guess it makes me nervous to say, we're gonna give you this money and we may give you more money. Uh, and that might, that extra money might be, we have no idea, just tell us what you need. I mean, at some point, we do wanna have a a budget for the year and say, this is what you have this year, uh, work on that. Um, so that approach makes me a little nervous, um.
Nobody's guaranteeing them that, just saying, no.
But, so I I mean, I I'd be interested in what the, you know, or what the three thousand will be spent on. We say digital, that doesn't go very far, what, you know, so what would it do for you? How would it help? Do you know, do you know your budget off the top of your head? What is the B S B P A budget?
So our budget is about ninety-six thousand dollars.
Ninety-six thousand, okay.
That's our, that's our total budget, you know, so that's what it costs for us to operate high, you know, pay our, yeah.
So what with the three thousand, do you have, like, all right, get this three thousand, this is what you're gonna spend it on? You're gonna hire a digital marketer?
Yeah, that's 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 exactly it, and that's that's the um, that's kind of the the one thing that we're not doing today. We've we've, we've tried to keep as much in-house as we can with volunteers, you know, that's cuts down the cost on doing business. And we've been doing that for as long as we can, Dana actually did before she became the administrator, a lot of social media, but. That that in itself is almost a full-time job. Um, we actually, we've we've had discussions and have a proposal from prolific marketing to do social media management, and so that's what, that's. Kind of where we're starting with and that's what we're looking at.
Well, the three thousand cover everything.
So, yeah, so prolific marketing, the base cost for them to just manage on a monthly basis for one year is twenty-six hundred dollars. That's without any additional ad spend, so when you put an ad in, when you want to market a post or an event through Facebook. You have to pay to reach your audience, and so that could be, you know, you could set a budget, you could say, it's only, you know, I'm gonna say, I'll spend thirty dollars. But you're not gonna get that much of a reach, so a good budget would be another three hundred dollars, you know, so, you know, realistically, we could probably run a decent-sized ad. Um, on top of what we're doing, and that would be three thousand dollars.
All right, so that would, so twenty-six hundred a year, the digital account, and then three hundred dollars, or four hundred. For the ads.
That Sean said, if they come back to us, or I, as I said, I think you agree with, if they put together some kind of proposal later on, it says. We have a couple more ads that we were being recommended to put out, and we, they come to us and say, can you help? We have the power of emotion in a second in a discussion period to say yay, nay, or, you know, what's going on?
Um, frankly, this is added item that I had proposed, added cost, which was the cost of mailing. Four nights a year to every.
Let me, let me do this, uh, respective Dave.
Okay.
Dave, anything else you want to add before I let you go?
Nope, that's it.
Can I, I have several more questions, sorry, sorry, the B I D, the Business Improvement District, wasn't popular, businesses hesitated to invest in that? They feel like they don't have the funds, or or what was the big hesitancy there?
There was a major recommendation.
Do you have a sense of that?
Yeah.
Like the reason they're not.
I I assumed spoke to businesses and.
Again, I think a lot of that will be discussed at the conference steering committee meeting by the team that's presenting on economic development. And uh, commercial stuff, um, I don't have the specifics, but the overall, Dave. Dana told me that generally the feedback was not positive for it.
Yeah, I I think we've heard from a number of sources, um, one being, we we, I forget who it was. Um, but we we do have um.
Whistling Kettle.
Uh, well, oh yes, Whistling Kettle, the owner of Whistling Kettle, we spoke to them about the bid, and they're part of a bid in Troy. And Schenectady, and there was quite a bit of contention um, for both of those. Uh, but he specifically did not think that Boston Spa is the right use case for a bid, or nor did he think the businesses would support it. Because the, because Boston Spa has such a strong B P A supporting the businesses, because what a bid does is. Essentially market businesses on behalf of the organizations in that improvement district, right? And that's what we're doing for our memberships, uh, with at at a considerably less, less cost than a than a bid would be to them. And, you know, we do get quite a bit of investment back in our community through um, sponsorships from our businesses, and they're doing that already. I think, you know, there's a good chance that if you were to in put in a bid, that we lose the those sponsorships, and then we may not necessarily see the same involvement. From the businesses, but, you know, in general, I I, I think, you know, businesses see that as an additional tax on top of. What they're already doing, and it makes it harder for them to do business in the village, and um, you know, that's, that's the kind of consensus that we've heard so far.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dave, anything else? I think we're good with you, I mean, stand by, if you you need to jump in again, raise your hand again, but uh, if you pull your, pull your hand down for now. Uh, we will uh continue here, and so Liz was bringing up something, go ahead.
Well, one of the things we had discussed with the newsletter um, was being able to mail it to every address in the village. Because we have almost fifty percent renters, as far as residents concerned, and sending it out with the water bill. Goes to the property owner, and um, that also, many of our businesses also leaks. So they don't see, you know, what's going on in the village and and get the update. So, you know, I did check with North Country Printing, which I think is one of the vendors the village is used and got, you know, asked them how much does it cost? If if the village was to mail, um, you know, and for eight and a half, eleven, you know, front and back. With the whole um, printing, the whole thing, um, you know, folding address, sealed, cloth, mail. Plus postage is nine hundred and ninety dollars, you know, for a mailing, so.
Now, maybe only, so you're assuming?
Well, we're assuming to start four, it would be nice if we did it like every other month, but, you know, at least quarterly. Um.
So four thousand dollars, does it give or take?
Yeah, which I think is is well worth spending to communicate with. The the residents and businesses and and people instead of leaving half of them in the dark. Talk to them at our event and give us that.
Okay, Dana, you're out of order right now.
Regarding these businesses, I did talk to Dana earlier and I asked if I, if she'd be willing on the B S B. I can't talk now.
B S B P A.
Thank you, would be willing to um distribute it to their members digitally. And um, to also include it in their newsletter, like the link to it. Um, just to, that's a way to bring some of the costs down. Now, the question I had was, um, the. So where are we getting that list number? Where where was, how did you develop that? Was that?
That's from the number of of. Addresses in in the village.
The print houses have these lists.
Yeah, they have the list.
From Tom.
Yeah, I got it from Tom, and he assumed twenty-six hundred, which is.
So from Tom, yeah, I got it from Tom and he assumed 2,600, which is about the number of residents we, you know,
households we have. I mean, it would be great for ESBPA, but that still leaves out, we have what, 46% renters in this village and they never get anything from the village because they don't get it. They don't get a tax bill. They don't get a water bill. They get nothing, but they live here.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea because it increases transparency of our local government. It's actually marketing the village itself because it shows what we're doing and it also includes the events. I think it's worthwhile investment. As far as I'm concerned, I guess my big thing is where, here's the money coming from.
Well, this, yeah, this is our speech. I think, I think it's worth doing. I mean, it would be good, I think, over time, I bet that expense goes down. We can ask people, can you please opt to get this electronically? And then we don't have to mail it, you know, like we should push towards electronic if we can. But the model of giving people money and then saying, come back for more if you need it, makes me nervous. You know, in the village, we have the, there's going to be unexpected expenses we have just in-house. So to extend that to multiple entities that are, are partners, but not the village. I'd be more comfortable saying, give us a rationale. So I'm comfortable with this digital idea. ESBPA does a ton of stuff for the village as a whole. If they had asked for 8,000 originally, I would have been okay with that. So I'm okay with the explanation for this 3,000 digital piece. But I don't, I don't want to present that we're this open, you know, blank check, open book that, okay, if you need more, come back later. I'd like to say, give us the, give us what you need, what you're telling me. We will consider that. We'll meet it or meet it as far as we can and that, and that's what you're getting this year and the budget is.
And you said, you said that twice and I think we're not saying, well, I just want to reassure you that what we're saying on this side of the table over here is we hear you and we always reserve the right here. You got to prove what you're doing with it ultimately, but it doesn't make any sense. Well, you know what? That one ad for $300 is great and have fun with that and next year, budget for some more if that's what you need.
I just wouldn't, I wouldn't make the earth invite them back.
Well, the invitation is universal no matter what we do, okay? People will come no matter what we say. So at least we're being friendly enough to say, we get it.
Yeah, but a budget, we should be able to live within your budget. Really, that's what a budget's for.
Okay, so what do you want to do with the newsletter issue? Because no pun intended. What, what do we have left that we put in the sidewalk? 3127.
So that means we need to come up with another 800 some dollars to finance it if we use sidewalks. They'll be, and just stick with 15,000.
Yeah, we can stick with 15, I think, because sidewalk, I think qualifies. If, if we get a bunch of people building sidewalks and then we need to pay them back, that's, I think qualifies as a contingency for me.
Well, it qualifies as that, you know, either we're going to say, no, we're not, you can't build that sidewalk or we're not.
We don't reimburse you this year. We don't want to say that.
We don't want to say that. So, yeah, I mean, if, if we come to that, then that's a whole other discussion.
But I mean, to me, that qualifies as a contingency. Here's someone who built the sidewalk expecting to be reimbursed within the code. And so we need to find that money.
Right. I mean, contingency only be $53,000. I believe that's what it was.
This is also unbalanced.
Well, I'm just saying, you're just talking contingency, that could get exhausted pretty quickly.
But you got a couple of options here. You could take 4,000 out of contingency additional to go to 106 and put in 4,000 to your newsletter idea and that would solve that problem too. I, I don't know how you feel about it. I'm just saying that you could leave some money on a certain category line that maybe you want to reconsider picking out of now that you're a marketer for that. It's up to you.
Either way, I, I support the idea of the newsletter and I'm hoping the price will go down as we get people to read the digital. But I'm, I'm comfortable using 4,000, taking it from somewhere sidewalks or I guess directly hoping it's contingency.
So you want to go to 106? I, I think for sidewalk purposes, if we're going to be trying to sweeten the pot at some point here, 18 is a nice number compared to 15. It's 20% higher. It gives you some breathing space to make an adjustment eventually on it. We may not get it this year to the right spot right away, but at least we'll have some room to do it. So I, I would rather see you could go to 106 on contingency. You're going to put 4,000 in the newsletter at that point. Liz, what do you think?
I had to say the newsletter was worth doing. I think the whole sidewalk issue of how we enforce, you know, that and, and how that gets paid for him, the way the law is written is really a separate discussion.
For sure, it's going to be.
Yeah. And if we are going to up the, you know, reimbursement rate, I'm not going to be.
I get you, but again, remember that's going to create some ancillary issues because two of you now have kind of opted out of the discussion on that for now at least.
Yeah, no, but I mean, you know, and I think the grant, if it happens, is a lot of money that will go towards the, you know, helping the situation. But I think just as when that reimbursement rate was put in, it was about 50% of the cost. And that, which is the limit to what a village can contribute.
So for people to be able to go kiss their babies goodnight, et cetera, tonight, are you okay going contingency, $14,000 less, so 106 to do the newsletter, 4,000? Or Ben, what do you want to say?
I, I guess I'd be, I'd be more comfortable since we have no idea how much is going to be spent in the sidewalks to just take it out of the sidewalks, put it in the newsletter. And then if we need a contingency at a later point in time, we use it on sidewalk. We never need to do that.
You want to try to get the price for newsletter to fit the 3,000, 127, just to complete the exercise, I guess?
No, we need, we, we need the 4,000 to do the, do a mailing at least initially.
I can recommend if you do want to take it out of sidewalk, we reduced the $873 from sidewalk currently bringing it down to 14,200 and the 4,000 for the, the postage.
I'm fine. I, I like that idea because we may never get to 14,000. But if we do, with the understanding that we could dip in a contingency at that point in time, if we, does that make sense to you?
So, yeah, I mean, I, I can leave the meaning with that.
I, I would hope, because I would like to see this event happen. Could we do a compromise? We get 7,000 and we will match up to 10. Try to get another 1,500 from businesses and we will match that 1,500 to get to 10,000. Is that?
I think, yeah, I think.
That is looking to it. We have to see what's out there.
I think you're going down a road that we don't need to go down this second. I think there's conversations to be had, et cetera. I just got this zero out, so I'm going to read the breakdown of what just happened here. So this will be open for public comment after I say it. This is not a motion yet. This is just to summarize everybody. We are going to abide by Julia's formulaic discussion from earlier, assuming this network is going to provide a certain amount of money and will zero out with respect to contracts, school district, et cetera. For actual stuff we determined here, we're going to recover $17,000 from the comp plan line, $10,000 for contingency, $633 from the mayor's salary, $10,000 for studies engineering and hold my thought here, $873 from sidewalk fund as it was budgeted to give us grand total of, after the $382 shortfall in the formulaics, $38,124, which will be spent, $10,000 to Eagle Matt Lee for ADA compliant bathroom, $10,000 for Union Firehouse for an ADA compliant bathroom, $2,500 for treasurer's salary, $1,624 for ESBPA watering additional funds, $7,000 for events, $3,000 for ESBPA digital marketing approach and newsletter $4,000, which takes that total up to $38,124, which nets to zero. Okay. Anything I got wrong in that? Let's open up for public comment. I would ask everybody to keep this to two minutes to the degree you can. If you do have one, because of the advanced hour we're at right now, anybody in the room with a public comment? Anybody on Zoom with a public comment?
Is there, is this for all business or just this?
This is just this. And again, this is, as I pointed out by Paul, that this was for this discussion right now. This public comment period. Go ahead.
Keith Lewis, 38 East High Street, Boston Spa, New York. You know, I want to say first off, and I had said this once before, I am universally disappointed that this is going on for several reasons. One is the fact that it sets precedence. It sets precedence for everyone who participated in the budget workshop, the original budget workshop and thought that they were passing a budget that would be taken seriously. That's number one. Number two, it sends a message to everyone who made proposals, who made proposals to the board on financing, that, you know, we'll, we'll take it under consideration, but later on, we may decide to rewrite everything. I, I also posed the question to the board, is this going to be a monthly thing? Because a lot of the discussion tonight talked about how figures had changed in the month. We got a little more money here. We got a little less money there. You're setting a precedence. You're setting a precedence that this is going to be an expectation. And I think the chief, the fire department was a great example of the can of worms you, you've opened. Because he said, listen, if you're going to give $10,000 over here, you got to give $10,000 over here. And I can tell you, if I was someone who had come to this board and had asked for money and then later found out that you had given other people money they hadn't asked for later, retroactively in the process, I would be angry. I think you're setting up a system that isn't sustainable. And, and Bernadette, I, I talked to someone in Albany and they laughed when I explained what was going on tonight. They laughed. I don't know why that was because I didn't have time to get the full, the full story, perhaps you do. And the other thing I want to say is when you talk about eliminating the salary increase, the miniscule salary increase, I'm so disappointed because you're setting up an elitist system where the only people that can work in this capacity as a trustee are people like you, Frank, who have money through their family or Liz, because you have, you have other income or Bernadette, because you have other income. It's not sustainable. It's not sustainable. This board should be paid a lot more. And I think if the board was paid a lot more, we would attract people that could actually devote the time and the energy. That being said, I think all of these things are worthwhile. I, I assume it's going to be approved and I'm not, I'm not sad about that. I'm sad about the process. I think you've opened a messy can of worms and I think it's going to come back to haunt you. Thanks very much.
I actually hope it does set precedence, this meeting, for one reason. Because this is the best we've gotten along as a board in our month and a half of operating, isn't it? We talked, we discussed recently. Every so often we had to fight each other down. We had to stop running over each other. But you know what? We worked and worked together. And I said that a month ago when this whole thing started up that this was a chance for us to do and I think we did it. And I'm happy about that result, to say the least.
Yeah, I'm just going to add, obviously, next budget season, I don't expect to do that.
Next budget season, I don't expect to see a fourth mayor in how many months at that point in time? How's that sound? But let's hope for the best in that respect, okay? And let's also make sure that we are asking all the questions to make sure that we're not missing something along the way as well, okay? Sometimes we can do better ourselves, all of us. Anybody else with a public comments? I think that's the same here. Hearing none. How do we do this, Attorney?
We're doing budget transfers. So the same way we do budget transfers.
Well, I know, written would be best, but.
I think you do it now.
Do it now.
I, I mean, I think the motion was, wasn't a motion, but you indicated all of this. Julia's got the information on there, got the information on the, the audio and on the video.
Can I get a motion that reflects the transfers that were discussed during the workshop and in my review that are verifiable by the treasurer and from video review?
That will make that motion.
Yes, that is motion second. Fandensa Raymond, in that order. Discussion now.
Yeah, look, we can do the motion, but I, I would like to see a written thing. I, I believe what you said verbally is accurate.
I think all three of us kind of looked through this, make sure we're all right, right?
Just a technicality, since it includes, is there funds for sidewalk, including the fund for sidewalk?
No, you actually did, did reduce it by $873.
Is the fact that we're reducing it, do we have a conflict?
No, I, I.
No, you mean a conflict of interest for the two of you to vote on that?
Yeah.
No, no.
I just want to be clear. I don't want.
A conflict would go in if you're saying, no, instead of 250 reimbursement, I want five. And by the way, I'm going to go take that five right now.
All right. I just want to be clear.
It was a good question, Sean. You're good. Okay. I would not let you vote if.
Okay, so we have a motion, the second discussion continuing. Ben, I think I might cut you off, so.
Yeah, no, no. If what you said is accurate, I will support that. And, but I would like to see it. Can we get a printout for next meeting? Or tomorrow, next day?
We all good? Discussion wise? All in favor? I, post, done? Motion carried. So, okay, we do have public comment for any information. Paul, did you have something you want to bring up?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that were, I'll keep this clear. It was my understanding during the monthly meeting, there was a question brought up about needing more information for when the fire department requests a private, a.
Private event?
Private event, right. And I think the chief explained the last one. I'd like to say to the board, if you would like information, I'll make a deal with you. Give me all your cell phone numbers and when I'm doing CPR on the village resident at two o'clock in the morning, I'll call you and tell you about that too. I don't think you would need that. I watched Chief Bush give his request for the budget. And you were all amazed on the amount of overdoses that have been going on in this village. All right. I think it's time to start educating yourself on really what goes on here. Okay? And secondly, the gentleman who just spoke in that question has been a pariah to this village. And I think that needs to be addressed, right? Because it's affected me personally often. All right, so. I love what I do. I just celebrated 25 years to have a gentleman that is putting people up on the stage here and making comments. Ben, all due respect, you talked about a couple hundred dollars being political tonight. When a gentleman stands up at the meeting and makes accusations about that gentleman right there, the mayor, and you guys don't react to that, that's a bunch of BS, all right? Sorry for my speaking. I had to get that off my chest. I really think you need to square things away here. When you're acting on monies for the village and the agencies that we run here, do your homework. I think it was eye opening when you came down to visit our facilities two weeks ago. And I'd like that education to continue. Thank you for the talk.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Pete Martin? Pete, you like Mark too?
Pete Martin, sorry, just before. On Thursday night, and Mary, you came a little bit late to confer plan. We, I can't remember the gentleman's name that talked about Stormwater.
Lou Niles.
He was, he was extremely good, very good. But he said, and there is a lot of flooding in our village. We all know that, right? But he said, there's a lot of grant money. So I don't know if you're going to go to the meeting or if you're going to go to the meeting, but I can't go this Thursday. And I believe he said it was not matching. So, and he said we didn't buy for it. So I don't know if you guys can find out more about it, if one of yous go, I know if you're going to go.
I think, I mean, Stormwater, yes. I mean, there's. I think, I mean, stormwater, yes, I mean, there's a lot of money for water sewers, including stormwater. But like most grants, you've got to have a study that shows what, what, what you need to do.
He said he can help us do it.
Well, then that would be great.
Yeah, so, but I can't.
But that's, that's the, the real issue, which frustrates everybody because nobody, you know.
I can't, but I, I have an open conversation. I'm sorry, cut, cut your voice, but I have an open conversation.
Studies and stuff, but in order to get the money to implement something, you first have to describe what it is you're going to do.
I believe there won't be much money. See, I think he's done all the studies for our village. Someone just has to reach out and talk to him.
Between Blue and what Don Rhodes is doing, I think we have a good conversation right now.
No, I mean, Rhodes.
That's for our family.
Jason or LaBella, they all do stormwater as well.
I'm more, uh, Blue, though, has some ideas, some good ideas that he was talking to me about after the meeting.
Sorry, I just said, thinking about those other town.
It was, it was library night. It was library evening night, actually. That was the same night.
Gina Maras, September, Lurie Lane. Without trying to sound like a jerk, where do you think that newsletter is going to wind up? That four thousand dollar newsletter. Where's it going to wind up? Hopefully recycle. If it's there, it might just be the trash can, right?
Um, the, the school sends out a newsletter.
And guess where mine went?
Recycling?
Actually, it did, recycling.
And actually, when we get it, we'll read it because we want to know what's going on at the school.
That's you.
Even though we have no children in the school.
That's you. Where do you think it's going to wind up? How many people do you actually think are going to read it?
I think a number of them are going to read it. More than I know.
Let's hope and let's also try to track it, folks, because it would be mean that you don't want to waste that annual leave that's going to go to no use.
Again, I think what Ben said.
Try to lower the cost.
Well, to try and reach out and, you know, people are truly interested to get their emails and then obviously we don't have to mail it. I, I mean.
I'm just saying.
I think, I think this is a good experiment and we'll find out how it works. I do think there's a lot of people that if they get a piece in the mail from the village, they're probably first going to be trepidation because it's a bill. But secondly, you know, if they find out about news and events that's going on in the village, I think a lot of times people don't even know about things because, you know, they don't go to the website necessarily. So.
We don't really, yeah, we don't have a local paper anymore.
Right.
The Boston Journal used to be that, that vehicle that almost everybody in this village read.
I will, I will give credit to Andrew Waite from the Gazette, though, that he's been doing a good job covering local issues. Saw the retired firefighter story the other day. So you know what? At least we've got somebody in the Gazette that's taking some good care of our local goings on here. Anybody else in the crowd? Maybe else? I see Lisa first. Sorry, Lisa.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to say anything. This is by that one oh six Prospect Street. Because I kind of feel sometimes that this falls on deaf ears and it's, it's just blah, blah, out of my mouth and in one ear, out the other. Um, as to listening to, um, events and money going to events and this, that, and everything else and newsletters and you prick this all again. Well, if you don't have money and you don't have events because you don't have money, what are you going to put in your newsletter? And what is the point of sending a newsletter if there's nothing going on and it's not doing anything really to help the village if people aren't reading it? I go to the village website and I can't find information about when meetings are, where meetings are. We're not even updating our website, so it's not going to do any good to do that. And with that being said, with this salary thing, you have a whole group of people there that all day long today, that fire whistle went off. They don't get paid a dime. Thank you. They don't get paid a dime to do that. When you wanted to be elected for office and you chose to do that and chose to serve the people knowing that you were going to have a low salary, maybe it's not enough. I don't get paid enough to do my job either, but I still do it. I serve the people every day. That police department you're talking about that's over there, it's, it's despicable. And the job that they're doing will be equipment they have to meet these new discovery laws and to, to get the process to go. And with all the drug cases that you got now and everything else, it, it's, you're worried about this little, little, and like Sean says, it's really kind of, what's the point? It's miniscule. Put it in the perspective of our volunteers and what they're doing and they're putting their lives on the line. And if they had to come to your house because your house is on fire and they said, hey, you know what? They don't want to improve my budget. They don't say, I'm going to drive a slow word, let it burn. They get their ass there. Think about that.
Thanks, Lisa. Anybody else in the crowd? We have somebody on Zoom?
Yes, and Judy.
Michelle?
That was just an errant raise of the hand. You guys have a great evening.
Have a good one, Michelle. Thank you.
Just one thing I'd like to respond to.
We, we technically have that next, so go ahead. I figured, like, no other hand, right? No?
Just this response of Paul, and I know he left, but maybe you could share this with him. I don't know, and, and you can tell me if I'm not aligned, but I think it's appropriate to ask or to note something about a private event. And sometimes, maybe it is privately, someone's going through cancer treatment and that's personal. But even just a general idea of, okay, this is a fundraiser for someone who's sick or this is a, a baby shower, something just, I don't know, maybe a little nervous for a village building and it's a private event. We have no idea who it is or what's going on at all. Like, there's no information of beyond that. I, I think, like, keep, like Paul was saying, you know, continue to learn about what we do and how we do it. And that would be, that fits in with his, his request that, you know, what are you guys doing? And what's going on with the village? So I don't, I don't, anyway, that was, but when I see private events, it just makes me think, you know, what kind of event might that be? Is that appropriate?
I'm not telling him that, you can't.
Well, he left.
I was just wondering, is there insurance? Like when somebody reserves with Wal-Mart, they're, they have to, to do an insurance.
They have to identify the village.
Right. When somebody holds a private event in a village building, do they also?
I believe we always have a line in it that insurance certificate has, been provided, will be provided.
I've never seen it, but I would presume you guys do.
Yeah, well, I just, you know, want to make sure, but just as an example, when I lived in the town of New Scotland, anybody could reserve a firehouse for an event and, you know, provide insurance. Here, I've been told it's only for the firemen. So I, I don't know, is that tradition or what? But it was open, you know, if somebody wanted to, to hold an event, they could use, use the firehouse.
I don't think there's a universal answer to that, to be honest with you. And stuff in municipality, you make that determination.
We don't have a policy right now, maybe.
I can.
Obviously, do you want to enlighten us? So I guess.
I can touch a little bit on that. Usually, the fire company votes, who wants, who gets used to that? If I want to use for a baby shower, I raise my hand in meeting and say, can I have a use?
Yeah.
Use it in the firehouse and boom, then the firefighter, it's not for outside person.
And that's Bob Bush Jr. address.
Someone to judge.
I just wondered, you know, I mean, it's great that you talked to the fire company, but it's not the fire company.
No, then they go, you guys, they get the appropriate.
No, but I just meant as far as the policy of just firefighters using.
And there has to be a little bit of traffic cop mentality because they still have to use their building. We can't have it being rented out every day. They've got a function to serve here and the volunteers at that, so.
No, I just wondered because it was in the town of Scotland, anybody could reserve the firehouse.
Are they volunteers or no? Anybody else? Any other business?
First I heard of any of this come about, I've been a firefighter for ten years.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate the answer though. Yeah, it's good education for all of us.
It does probably work worthy of some policy discussion since it's building, you know, village property, you know, how is it being used beyond the fire? Not that, so that now, but.
Okay, can I get a motion adjourned? There are no vouchers in this special meeting, so can I get a motion to adjourn? And that's trustee Baskin, anyone seconding? Raymond, discussion, all in favor? Aye.